Want to get ready to go?
One moment, please. We're good to go. Your worship?
Great. Thank you, Jane. So, Council, Council Elliot will be a few minutes late, but we're going to start. I'd like to call this committee the whole meeting for August 12th, 2021 to order, asking for adoption of the agenda. Someone want to make that motion? Council Sherlett, seconded by Council Brooksville. All in favor? Motions carried. Adoption of the minutes of the Committee of the Whole for July 15th. Council Palmer, seconded by Council Sherlett. All in favor? Motions carried. Any business arising from those minutes? Council Palmer.
Mayor Sol, so last Committee of the Whole, we were going to talk, Council Elliot wanted to talk about, I forget, future of the community activity, but again, he's not here, but it's thought on the agenda, so anyway, just to keep that sort of reminder, so we'll save it for another time.
Okay, awesome. Appreciate it.
I was gonna suggest it's like future of the farmer's market. I was gonna suggest maybe you could just put it on at the end, if you tend to.
It actually is in here, under unfinished business number eight. And so hopefully, so Council Elliot should be here and we'll discuss that. Are you okay with that? All right.
The farmer's market.
So any other business arising from the minutes? Say none. I'm going to go on to announcements from the mayor. So I am happy to announce, I had a telephone conversation with our ambulance station unit chief, Kirk Petoulis, yesterday. He's informed me that we have our ambulance station as an Alpha Car, permanent, full-time, as of Monday. All of the local staff had their jobs posted, they were able to apply for their jobs, and all of them were able to keep their jobs as full-time. So all 22 communities in British Columbia that were going to lose their ambulance station to service on-call, get to keep it. And now we also see Taffino and Lake Houchen included in that. So a bonus for us, we get to have our ambulance station 24/7. We know that's factual because the staff have now been posted, however, we have not seen an official announcement from the provincial government. So, but all of us are very happy with that. So I'm extremely grateful for for all those involved, our MLA, my co-colleague mayors of Golden and Kimberly, Mayor McCormick and Mayor Ozes, and myself spoke to Adrian Dix, and he was listening. So we're appreciative of that, and we're appreciative of the support from the unions. So, good news for the community. Absolutely great news. All right, we're going to move on to delegations and presentations. So Development Finance Workshop. Ms. Wade, Mr. Simon, you have a presentation. I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship and council. We're very pleased today to start off with one of the priorities of council, which is to be looking at the implementation of DCCs to fund infrastructure. Previously, a couple of our council staff workshops with budget and dealing with a number of our priorities, we had discussed having a development finance workshop. So we are embarking on that today. Staff have retained Nancy Henderson from Urban Systems, who has background in updating development cost charges, master planning, land use strategic plan, and reviewing development fees and charges, and has over 29, well, has 29 years of experience throughout the various municipalities, and has worked with West Colona, Pencton, and other resort municipalities as well, and has an extensive background in this. The objective of today's meeting is to bring forward information for council, as we have previously discussed, on the various development finance tools that are available to municipalities. The, we're going to do this in two parts. So it is quite a lengthy process, but this is part one today, to focus more in on development cost charges. And the idea is to provide information to council and to have an open discussion, so that we can have a discussion and understand the various aspects of the financial tools, some philosophical questions in regards to how do we look at funding off-site works as we move through the OCP and our population forecast for 2041, with the update of master plans. We will have to embark on a series of conversations in order to implement updates to our development cost charge bylaw or utilizing other financial tools. So for today, we are embarking on a workshop, which I believe you all have the presentation before you, and it had an opportunity to review. And I'm going to pass the presentation over to Nancy Henderson, who's with us today, is from Urban Systems, and has been working with staff and preparing this workshop for today. And we're very excited to start the conversation and have the dialogue and the discussion, as it's a very complex process. And we really need to be discussing all our opportunities before us, and also the philosophy of development tools and what will work best for Rebelstoke and what we know is coming forward in 2041. So Nancy, I'm going to pass it over to you, and thank you for being here today with all your experience in this area. Nancy was the past general manager for West Colona as the, for the Department of Planning and Development Services, and has also been a manager in Kimberly in the, in this vein as well. So she's very familiar with going through this process with council and staff and the community. So Nancy, off to you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Your worship and members of council, really happy to be here with you today to have this workshop. I do have quite a long presentation, but I do hope it to be interactive, and we do have some sort of questions that I definitely want to ask you, and then we'll revisit them at the end as well. This is a heads up, and feel free to interrupt me at an editing time, because this is meant to be interactive, if you would like it to be. As noted, I've had the pleasure of working with your staff at the city of Revelstoke, just off and on for the last couple of months, so starting to learn a lot more about the community, and also cross paths with them in previous careers as well, which, so it's really nice to be back working with members of your staff. So just as a sort of point of order, would you like me to share my screen, or would you like to just kind of look at the presentation before you?
Either one works. What, how do you feel, council? Share the screen, please, Nancy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and so, thank you very much. And like I noted, I can't see you, so please just interrupt if you would like to interject. And I'll probably minimize my screen during the workshop, so that I can see you. So as noted, this is part one of what was.
Nancy, we're not seeing anything on our screen yet. We're just seeing you, we're not seeing your presentation.
Okay, there we go. That should.
How we got? Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, sorry about that. Now I just got to get things sort of over here. Okay, so as noted, I'm just going to like start this presentation here. This is one, part one of a two-part series. And so our purpose today is really to deep dive into DCCs and development cost charges. Just one second here, I've got a bit of a interesting view that I need to just try to change here. Sorry about this. I'm just gonna stop sharing for a second. Okay, this isn't going to. Okay, I'm just gonna have to wing my notes, but that's okay. So we're going to go through the outline, just, you've had a really nice introduction to myself, and thank you for that, Mary Ann. We'll go through the objective of the workshop, and then we'll have our, one, a discussion, just with you guys about like your philosophy regarding development and who pays for growth. So really want to hear from you. Then we're going to dive, do a deep dive into development cost charges, just what they're all about, what the best practices and principles are, and kind of how they're calculated, what the review process looks like, what you, what projects are fundable. And then we're going to relate that to Rebelstoke's current DCC bylaw, just to sort of a bit of an overview on that. And also, we'll talk a little bit about, you know, how DCCs can affect housing, affordable housing costs, things that you can do in terms of reducing DCCs for affordable housing specifically. Then we'll talk about our next steps, and then have an opportunity for more, you know, questions and discussion. The next workshop, we're going to talk about the other development finance tools. So there's a multitude of tools that, that communities can use to fund off-site services and growth-related infrastructure. And so we'll, we'll kind of dive into those. They deserve a workshop of their, of their, of their own. Many communities are using not just DCCs, I mean, they're interchanging the tools depending on the situation. And then we'll talk about next steps from there as well. So the purpose of this workshop is to provide a background regarding development finance considerations for financing off-site infrastructure. So we're really focusing on not onsite needs, but the offsite needs to facilitate growth. So we hope through this workshop, we're going to talk about the challenges and opportunities respecting financing growth and development, as well as distinguishing between paying for a service and financing a service. Municipalities pay for fire departments, but you've often financed growth. You're collecting money from other people, and you're financing it, you're, you're funding maybe some of it, but not necessarily all of it. We'll review and consider your broad approach to development finance. Are you, do you think that developers should pay the whole way? Is there some room for subsidization? And we'll get into a conversation where I really want to hear from you on your thoughts. We'll also consider just how your approach to growth could, could really impact the choices that you make in terms of development finance. And then, as noted, we'll dive into sort of the principles and best practices of DCCs. And we want to be able to differentiate between securing funding for construction of works and services as a condition of approval that are often for onsite, and well, as well as affecting development specifically in financing growth-related infrastructure. And we'll provide just a brief overview of kind of where your DCC program is at, and things to think about after, you know, this presentation, and maybe in context with this presentation. So not all growth is created equal, you know, some growth actually can pay for itself, some growth is inefficient, and, and you generally will hear about smart growth or sprawling growth. And sprawling growth is generally quite expensive to maintain. The operation and maintenance costs, you know, is often being called the gift that keeps on taking, you know, there's costs associated with it. And there's certain types of growth where the costs are a lot less. And you'll see like high-density development will be less expensive on a per-unit basis to maintain than a single-family sprawling development. So good planning and asset management will definitely help balance the community plans for growth and your ability to pay for it in the long term, because you have to think about asset replacement as well. And I think one thing that's really important is the standard of equity that requires that the cost of infrastructure should be paid by those that benefit from the works, and not subsidized necessarily by the existing taxpayer. There are some situations where municipalities are prepared to subsidize some growth because of economic or other benefits. So the key questions to consider when you're going and considering, you know, how you finance growth, and these, and if you can just keep these questions maybe in mind as we're going through this presentation, but, you know, who should pay for the services required by growth? You know, should that be funded just by the developer, or does the community, should they bear some of that? Do they benefit from some of those increases? What are the community's values and attitudes regarding growth and development? You know, some communities are, don't want to see a lot of growth. I mean, I, just not to really name names, but I mean, I think they'd be happy to note it, but like places like Oak Bay, they're kind of happy with the way things are, and they're known for that. Can you attribute all costs of growth to certain beneficiaries? And that's one of the key technical exercises of development cost charges. Is it clear what services or portion of are to be paid for by the development, and which are to be paid for by the community? And sometimes you look at that, you know, in parks, you know, the development community might say, well, the existing communities get a benefit from this new park, so they should pay for a portion of it. And these are the types of conversations that you should have when you're developing a DCC program. So I'd like to hand it over to you for a second here, and just talk a little bit about, you know, council's approach to growth as a first question. And I know that we could probably talk about this all afternoon, and we only have a couple hours. So, you know, maybe if you could, just as a start of the conversation, to kind of give me a quick feel for, for how you approach who should pay for growth. Let's just say on a scale of one to five, with the five being that growth should pay for itself, and one being that, you know, you'd be okay with subsidizing some of the costs of servicing growth. Maybe we could just kind of go around the table and get a feel for, for where each member of council is at, if that's okay.
All right, we'll, we'll do that, Nancy. So Council Sherlett, any comment, one to five? How you feel, five being fully growth paid for by development?
Something to learn. I'm happy to find a balance. I think there's that benefit in the existing community contributing to these new assets to have a sense of ownership to it. And that we do benefit from that development and growth, but the, yeah, the new development should be pitching in and contributing towards the community.
All right. Council First Com, four. There we go. Thank you. Council Elliot?
Yeah, four or five. I think we're a very attractive place to live, so I feel like right now we have that bargaining power, not always the case, but right now it is.
Okay, good. I had, I had number four. With that, Council Elliot?
It's a tough question. Growth is, it depends on whether you call growth good or bad. And we're in a housing crisis, so obstacles, DCCs, this, this all plays into it. We need houses. Is density housing growth, or is it just meeting, meeting demand? So it's a tough one. I'm, I'm more central, I'd go three, be leaning towards two.
Okay. Thank you, Council Palmer.
So I differ a little bit in that I think it's an easy question. The answer is difficult. And all, council rolls their eyes. So, yeah, so it depends. So for, I don't see the DCC should be inhibiting growth. People, they shouldn't be so high that they inhibit that people go elsewhere, especially when it comes to diversification of the economy, that it shouldn't inhibit that. When it comes to infill in small development, I think the DCC should be very low, so pushing towards one or two. For major developments, yes, we are an attractive community, people want to come here, again, not to a point of inhibiting, but then it should be leaning towards the higher that the, the developer is paying in that circumstance. Recognizing, I recognize, however, that DCCs is really one small component of that. We end up having, I think it magnifies the, the conversation. So if there's a development that's delayed because of DCCs for a couple of years, we've lost that taxation in those two years, that's probably about equivalent. And so, so I, right now, I think our DCCs are in the right order of magnitude, but I would like to see DCCs being reduced for infill, smaller projects, entrepreneurial-type things, diversification of the economy. I think the DCCs are pretty close to where they should be, probably inflationary increases, and that's what council's recently decided. But this review will be, be good and say, well, what, what does the community think of the developer paying?
So, Mayor, so greenfield, new projects on a bigger scale, DCCs are paid for by the developer to people, or, or the infrastructure costs are actually part of the development. They put in the pipe, they put in the sewer and water line. So I'm, I'm just kind of concerned, what is the DCCs in this case? Because they're already done. But, but that's another discussion.
Council Palmer, and then I'll go to Ms. Antus. So just, on contrary, I think this discussion is about the offsite implications and not those direct onsite, but their relations, because they have to pay for that. But the DCCs are designated for infrastructure, structure, the bigger, so those other things. So I, I don't think that's a major concern. This is the financing of that, so it's not those requirements that the developer has anyway. Ms. Antus, I was just saying, you can answer. All right, Nancy, we'll go back to you. You've heard, council?
Yes, thank you very much. You can see how it gets complicated. And when we go through this presentation, I hope that we can sort some of, some of this out. You did provide some insight, some, some members of council more than others, just about certain types of growth, you know, in terms of infill housing, and maybe being a little more supportive of the, of subsidizing potentially the types of uses or in your community that you'd like to see. Whereas maybe others would be pay your own way. And that's okay, because a lot of times when you're considering development finance, the answer is always, it depends. And that's why it's become one of the more complicated areas of local government. It's just another question, I think some members of council alluded to this, but would council like to encourage or discourage certain types of growth, or certain locations that there are certainly locations where you'd really like to see growth?
You pick, inner-city growth, density are saving on infrastructure costs. So maybe the infrastructure is already in place, so that would be, and it also talks to affordability and environmental footprint, and all these things. So it's an obvious step that we should be encouraged. So you would sort of forego the DCCs in those cases, and make it more costly on the fringe. That's just common, well, I would think.
Any other comments as to councilperson?
Yeah, just because I gave such a brief answer earlier, I can't really agree with Council Elliot and Council Palmer. More like encouraging growth in the, in the center core, less on the fringe, encouraging infill housing, certainly, probably larger DCC breaks for affordable housing, for long-term rental housing, the kind of thing, things that we need. And also further like to, not just diversifying our economy, but diversifying our housing stock. So, you know, single, large, single-family homes being targeted with the highest DCCs, because that's what we need the least, basically, and any kind of rental housing.
Rentals or condos or four-placed.
And maybe a break for secondary suites, carat houses, et cetera, et cetera, which I think here is in your presentation.
So Nancy, you're all aware that first Rebelstoke has a finite supply of bare land to build on, just because of the shape of our valley. And so densification is always something that is encouraged as we move forward. Council or Sherlett?
Yeah, I don't know where it fits into the conversation, whether it's here or somewhere else as well, is some method to deal with some of the older housing stock in town. So a DCC from either side is a new house or a new unit on the property. But we have a bunch of properties of derelict housing that is not being used in our core, that if we could encourage and incentivize that redevelopment of those properties, to be able to achieve those infills, to get more efficient housing, so we don't have so many leaky houses that the rentals in this community are notorious for mold issues, for high utility costs. Energy poverty is definitely a real thing in this community, and to see that being able to be impacted through the DCCs or another tool, to be able to encourage that improvement of our housing stock, not just diversification. On the diversification topic and incentivizing affordable builds, I would really like to see a good, clear definition of what that means. And as we define the housing mix that we need, what is affordable? Affordable to who? Because yes, maybe we need some more median income housing, but we also need low-income housing that's reasonable for service staff. So those definitions, I think, need to be clarified, because there's a lot of rhetoric around affordable housing, and what is affordable, and it really comes down to who is it affordable for?
Thank you, Nancy.
All right, that's great. One more question for you guys. Just in terms of like, what do you think the community's tolerance is to front-end infrastructure costs to accommodate growth? You know, sometimes you might need to front-end, you know, millions and millions of dollars to open up an area for growth. Maybe you're downtown and doesn't have appropriate fire flows, just saying, I don't, I don't know about, just as an example. And what's your willingness to kind of come up with the money to get it done and then collect it later? Or are you kind of risk adverse, or do you not have a ton of reserves? So just maybe some of your thoughts around front-ending growth?
Council Palmer, then Council Elliot?
So my sense for the community of front-ending is that, that there'd be a low tolerance by the community. So if, on the front-ending, as opposed to just taking from reserves or borrowing, or those kind of things, or building some income, I would say that the tolerance of that is very low, and also, I would say is generally unnecessary.
Council Elliot?
I think we have a good, you know, the interest rates are exceptionally great right now. We already have a history of front-loading, every, you know, we talked CPR hill guys, we charge them, we're the big Eddie, we're charging them continuously for the next five years for their water. So I don't think we're losing, we've got a history of doing it and doing it well. And people seem to relatively accepting of it, as long as they're being charged for it, they seem to accept it.
Okay. Any other comments, Council? Council Sherlett?
I would agree with Council Elliot. I think if we have a good plan, and we show the vision, this is what we're going to do, this is why we're going to do it, and this is how the costs are going to be divided. If that is clearly communicated, I think there's a willingness to look at it, not like check, to be sure. There's definitely some hesitance there, and there have been, not, not all the examples were great. So we'd have to tread carefully and have that very clear vision.
You're right on communicating. Just tell people we're doing, and yourself upfront, say, we're going to be charging these guys over the next 10 years for the infrastructure. Simple. You know, we'll just pay because we can get a super good interest rate, if you couldn't get, if you had to pay for it upfront, we can get it at 1% or less.
Yeah, there definitely is some reticence in the community when it comes to basically being the bank for new development, so we definitely cautious as a.
That's all I was gonna say. I think it could be a little bit more divisive than that. I think it, like, assuming that everybody's gonna see it from a reasonable perspective is not, I think, reasonable.
If I gave you a loan, and said you're gonna pay over 10 years, if I have a big debt account and I could swing it, would you not be happy with that?
Yeah, how much you?
I'm not saying, I'm just saying, that's the city's position, right? We have an opportunity to get money at a good rate, you don't. But you, if we don't do that, you're stuck, not doing anything. That's, that's the decision.
It's not open to conversation. Council First Com?
Just with your two examples there, with the big Eddie, everyone in the big Eddie recognized there was a problem. It needed to be fixed. The city came up with a solution, and people weren't, I wouldn't say happy about it, but they accepted that that was the best solution they were, yeah. People on CD Hill are still pissed because that guy ran down their thread.
You want, you want the water, you want a sewer set of connections?
I still pissed about it. That was on Saturday. I just, I went up hill, and then the pump stops working and floods my basement. If I had a septic system, I had a septic, I still have a septic system, I'd be much happier.
I think Thomas Brooks, they, they often in as well.
Council Palmer?
So Nancy, I think I may have heard the question different than someone's, my colleagues, because I, because I said, I think that the community has a low tolerance to that front-end funding. And I don't see the big, the big Eddie example as really, because that was really mostly for existing residents. There was a benefit to the existing. Yes, there's more development potential, so that's fair, so a fair interpretation. But I, that, I think, if there, if there is a benefit for the greater community, then I think there is a receptivity to the front-ending. But if we're talking about doing massive water treatment plant expansion, so that some new resort can come to town, I don't think this town wants that.
Good. Yeah, I think, Council Palmer, you nailed that's the question. That's the question, yeah.
I would say to that, let's go back to what, how we got to this point. What was the promise made 15 years ago that we were going after? And we made a direct decision to go after that, and now we're saying we don't want it unless they pay. So we made, we made a choice a long time ago in our direction of going, now you're kind of saying there's consequences, but I don't like.
So, so in, 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 answer to that, maybe this is getting a little bit off-topic, but yes, 15. yes, 15, 20 years ago, there was visionaries in this community and it transformed our community. We're a different community today. There's different values today.
Yep, good. All right, Nancy, back to you.
Great, thank you very much for that insight. I'm just going to go back to the presentation here. Can you guys see that?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Perfect. All righty. Okay, so just in terms of development finance tools, and I think this is a good segue from your conversation. Because there's always existing deficiencies and then infrastructure that you need for growth. So taxpayers typically aren't keen on subsidizing new development, but that's not the case in all situations. And, you know, my experience, for example, in Kimberley, where the mine was closing and, you know, they had a ski hill and tourism was the future. You know, there was some interest in subsidizing to accommodate that type of growth. So it's not always the way, but typically taxpayers don't want to pay for new growth. Development finance, as I've noted, has become one of the more complex areas of local government administration. And there's so many different ways of going about it. So it is good to really like dive into it like we're doing today and get on to the city to kind of dive into it and try to understand it. All areas of local government services, as you know, are affected by growth. And that several growth-related municipal costs have limited development finance opportunities. And I know that as councillor, you've probably talked about this, you know, in terms of recreation, fire, you know, just civic facilities. If you're outgrowing City Hall, that type of thing, it's hard to collect the monies for that. Community amenity contributions is an area where many municipalities have started looking into. It's more of a probably metro Vancouver kind of lower mainland commonality, but it is being considered as another tool to fund those types of growth-related costs that DCCs can't fund. Types of development finance tools, and just to add more confusion, you know, to development finance, many of the tools that we have fit into multiple categories. But, you know, in terms of cost recovery, you know, to recover the cost spent on growth-related infrastructure, DCCs are probably, you know, your number one. Local area service is an option, but they typically are used to fix existing deficiencies and user fees and charges, which is a tool that has been utilized in the city of Revelstoke and you're quite familiar with. Source of capital, just essentially borrowing, you've talked a little bit about that today. The DCCs that you collect that are sitting in reserve is another source of capital and you'll see that in your financial plan. Developer build agreements, so you're transferring the responsibility for financing to the developer. Revelstoke has utilized this in Mackenzie Village and up at the resort, where you're transferring the responsibility for financing to the developer. This works really well when you have, you know, one large developer and, you know, they're the ones that benefit. Gets a little more confusing when there's multiple property owners and just sort of managing that. And then there's partnership agreements where you could, you know, enter into a public entity to cooperatively finance infrastructure amenities. You don't see this too much in the infrastructure, servicing infrastructure line of things, but you're starting to see it now more and more in recreational amenities and some other amenities, but typically in larger cities.
Sir, Nancy, the developer on the last slide there. Go back, sorry. So the developer.
What was your question?
It was just, I guess, where the developer pays for the infrastructure upfront, a developer agreement. That's what I was talking about where currently a big developer will fund, yeah, developer builder agreement is to transfer responsibility for financings to the developer. So in that case, you forego the DCCs, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, so you can't double charge, right? So quite often, the other thing is to, like, you charge your DCCs and we'll get into like how you come up with your program. And I could go, I don't want to go out on too much of a limb here, but, you know, you've got your program. And quite often to service a certain developer, you know, they need servicing that isn't in your DCC program. So it's not DCC eligible. And then you would secure servicing requirements through developer build agreements. So and sometimes it's a combination of, right? You have developer build agreements for certain things. Maybe they're getting a credit if it's in the DCC program. And I don't want to get too complex here, but, you know, there's so many permutations. And like this is the joys that Ms. Wade and Mr. Black get to deal with, you know, when they're dealing with applications before them, is, you know, how do we do this? You know, can we do this through developer build agreements? You do it through front-ender agreements. And there's, and you just have to be really pragmatic depending on the situation.
Great, nice answer, carry on please.
All right, so, you know, I think in terms of influencing factors, and this is exactly kind of where I was trying to go with this, is you have to have a broad approach and not a prescriptive strategy. And this is where like, what's the best tool? Well, it depends. You have to be flexible based on the circumstances. And the key to this, and we'll get into the principles, but you can't double charge. So there's mechanisms to protect the development community. And I mean, you need to be transparent and honest because this is really a finance tool for the benefit of everybody. You know, when you're looking at your tools, you want to look at key factors that influence the approach that you want to take. You know, as I mentioned, like, what's the ownership structure? If there's one developer, you know, the sort of development build agreement, transferring it onto the one owner because they're the ones who benefit is a tool. But if there's lots of owners, like maybe downtown or you want where infill development is hindered because you've got inadequate infrastructure and you've got lots of owners, you know, that's where, you know, sharing that cost using some of the mechanisms like DCCs and others, you know, it changes. The timing, you know, quite often you might have infrastructure needs that are in a DCC program, but they're, you know, they're 10 years out. So, you know, you have to look at when it's needed and if it's needed immediately or in the future. And who benefits? You know, you've got tools, you can definitely decide to subsidize certain types of development. We'll get into that a bit more, especially with, in terms of affordable housing, as I know that's a major issue for the city. Your risk tolerance, you know, we talked a little bit about that. And then development industry structure and the level of sophistication. You know, when you have one owner and a sophisticated developer, you know, they sometimes would rather take care of their infrastructure themselves. If they have deep pockets and flexibility, they're often quite happy to do that. There are a number of financial tools. And the second workshop, we're going to hit on these other ones. And the focus today is on development cost charges. Some of them are, you know, the density bonusing and we'll touch on, you know, community amenity contributions as well, which, you know, they are kind of part of the puzzle. The other ones are a little more traditional. So just looking at the tools that you use before we just go into this deep dive on development cost charges. Your development cost charge program was established in 2005 with an amendment in 2008. You've also, so you use DCCs now, as you well know. You've used the local area service tool for Big Eddie and Thomas Brook. You guys talked a little bit about that earlier. And developer build agreements is noted, you know, Mackenzie Village and RMR. And, you know, you've got, they do latecomer, I think, some of your developers. But, I mean, that's another tool for the developer, you know, who's got these excess and extended services to get the money back. And then you have dedicated connection fees where you've built in, you know, sanitary trunk oversizing into that. So the user fees are also paying for the associated costs. So now just diving into the DCCs, and this is sort of how we're going to approach this. We're going to talk about sort of the principles and overview. We're going to go on a super high level into the DCC process and rate calculations. We could spend a whole day on that, including like the assist factors, benefit allocations and DCC sectors. And if and when you guys do do a DCC review, you know, that'll be a major component is like working through that. Rate comparisons and, you know, municipalities tend to want to know what their neighbors are charging. The exemptions, the statutory exemptions, and then the ability that the city has to reduce DCCs. We'll chat a little bit about affordable housing, as well as some of the sort of trends and things that are going on in DCCs right now. And then we're going to just kind of talk a little bit about your existing bylaw. And then we'll get into next steps and any other comments that council might have. So just like the principles, as we talked about, the DCCs need to be integrated with all your other plans. You know, you need to make sure that they're integrated. You look at your OCP, you know, your master transportation and infrastructure servicing plans. They all have to be in your financial plan. And if they're not integrated, you have a problem, right? So your OCP is really setting, you know, how are you going to grow? Where are you going to grow? And the DCC program needs to definitely reflect that. It's based on if you benefit, you pay DCCs. If you don't benefit, you shouldn't have to pay DCCs. If you're no burden, you shouldn't have to pay. It's based on fairness and equity. You know, transparency is really important part of the process. And I see that sort of accountability, transparency, fairness and equity as really key cornerstones to the development of a program. You can't double charge. And, you know, when you're working with the development community, I mean, they're going to typically zero in and make sure that you're not, and make sure that you've got the benefit allocation to growth correct. And that's where, you know, you need to have that consultative input. You know, there's engagement. You're opening the books. The program is clear and transparent. And one thing that DCCs do, and they benefit the development communities, it gives certainty. When you're going into a development and you don't really know what the costs are, it's a huge risk for the development community. And sometimes when the zoning's there and they know the DCCs and they can do their performance, that's a huge benefit. And that's something that I've heard time and time again that the development community is looking for versus the sort of ad hoc negotiations, which can be quite difficult and time-consuming. So what are they? I think council's a pretty good idea, but it's really just a means of pooling funds from a number of developers to pay for offsite capital projects, which benefit them all. You benefit, you pay. And it's really just a way to make it fair and equitable across the board. So the Local Government Act authorizes the collection of DCCs and they're charged and levied on developers to help pay for infrastructure associated with growth and parkland needed for growth. It can't, they cannot be used to fix existing deficiencies. So applicants, they would pay at time of subdivision approval for single-family development sites. Technically, you could charge a building permit. Very few municipalities do that because you're front-ending the costs and it may take 20 or 30 years for a subdivision to build out. So that's generally not a recommended approach. However, when you get to this sort of multifamily, commercial, they're base and well industrial and institutional, they're all at building permit stage because you just don't know what's going to be built and how many units. So what can they pay for? You know, transportation, including active transportation in your bike lanes, which I know are really important in Revelstoke. Water, sanitary sewer, storm drainage, parkland acquisition. Trails is another one that I've heard coming out of your, you know, Parks and Recreation Master Plan underway, that the initial engagement is looking for more trails and limited parks development. So, you know, your fencing, you know, your landscaping, your grass, that type of thing in your parks, the play structure, but not tennis courts and artificial turf. As soon as you go to artificial turf, it's deemed a facility. So that it's quite strict in terms of parkland. But they must be related to growth and not existing deficiencies in the system. So if, I know this isn't a situation for Revelstoke, I don't think, but if you're short on parkland based on the target, there's an existing deficiency, you can't lump that portion of acquisition into your DCC program. Just what you need to serve with service growth. So operation and maintenance, no engineering works needed for the existing population. That's where you develop your beneficiaries. The amenities such as libraries, fire halls, can't be, recreation facilities, nope. So, yeah, so there's things that you can pay for and then things that you got to come up with, you know, your general revenues or grants to pay for. So good DCC projects are planned well in advance. You know, the plan is generally set out for a good 20 years. It's required if the growth happens. If it doesn't happen, you don't need it. The primary benefits of your program is to new development. And citywide projects are good projects for DCCs, although area specifics are work in some cases. So like not all roads necessarily would be good DCC projects. And then when I was in West Kelowna, we just had arterial roads in our DCC program. And if a development needed a collector road, it wasn't DCC fundable or creditable. It'd be something that would be negotiated at time of development. This is an example. So projects that don't qualify as DCC projects, you know, if it wasn't planned and it's required right away, if it's not related to growth, it benefits only a small area and required primarily to rectify existing deficiencies. So you got to look to other tools to fund those types of projects. So why, why bother? They're quite cumbersome, you know, it seems like there's a lot to them. But it provides certainty to the development community for infrastructure upgrade costs. They're fair, they distribute costs across all the beneficiaries. Growth-related offsite works negotiated on a case-by-case basis is quite cumbersome for your development application process and, you know, time is money to the development community. And then the other thing is, I mean, there's a potential subsidization by the taxpayer or the first to develop. So the burden is on the first to develop to provide that infrastructure. And then quite often, they just can't pencil the development, so it doesn't happen. So it just ensures that growth pays for growth and existing users pay for existing deficiency. It is a best practice to update and review your program regularly. And I'll get into why a little bit later. So DCC sectors, and in council's discussion, you were alluding to this. The map on the screen is actually the city of Penticton. And they've developed a core and periphery DCC program. So they have a strong desire to have infill development in their core. And then they have a few longstanding subdivisions that are on the periphery of the community that are more single-family, traditional-type development. So they've broken their city into two sectors. So infill has a lower DCC and the outside has a higher DCC. So that's an option. When you go into sector DCCs, you really want to think about it really carefully and that would be part of your comprehensive DCC review if you undertake one. Basically, sectors, I wouldn't recommend for a community the size of Revelstoke to have too many because it creates problems with funding. You just never have enough in reserves, right? Where if you have a citywide and a sequential plan, you have more flexibility. So unless there's a real disparity between users and overarching, DCCs easier. And it's also possible to create like a sector DCC for just like water, for example, and have overarching for the rest. Yeah, so some blend themselves better than others. There's pros and cons, but it's something to think about during your review. So how, like, DCC recoverable costs? You basically go, these are all the things we need to service growth because you've identified where you want your growth in your OCP. You've done your master plan, so you know what you need. So here's the cost. You kind of figure out how much you're going to grow. You portion the costs allocated to existing development. So what, you know, you've got your total program cost, but if it's helping existing deficiencies or benefiting existing users, you would take those out of the program. And then there's a municipal assist factor, which we're going to chat about because that's really council's tool to reduce the cost of DCCs and potentially subsidize development. And you'd be using taxpayers' funds to do that. That equals your DCC recoverable cost. And then what you do is your basic DCC calculation. You take your recoverable cost, you divide it by growth. You take your recoverable cost, you divide it by growth, and then that gives you your DCC rate. So just in the simplest terms, if you had, you know, DCCs that were at one million dollars, for example. And there's five hundred new homes planned, that works out to two thousand dollars per home. You know, it's it's that simple. If councils, the DCC rate, you say council doesn't really like it. That's where you bring in your assist factor. Because how you come up with your DCC program is a technical exercise. I mean, it's based on, you know, industry standard pricing and, you know, engineering cost estimates. And then council's tool would be, you know, geez, that's too high. We can't charge that much. We're gonna use the assist factor. And that would essentially subsidize the growth. But that assist factor is funded through like general revenues and taxation. So you have to account for it every year as part of your annual plan and financial planning. And the provincial government is expecting reports on that annually.
On the previous slide, Nancy, you said the total program cost. Right, as a starting point, you identify all the elements that are associated with growth, like infrastructure transport. I think that was the hiccup for for our DCC debate at the last time that really came to fruition. There was a major obstacle on a thirty thirty million dollar sewer plant that was required, and now it's down to ten. And it's just that, so if you don't define those right at the start, the DCC talk goes off off track. And that's why, what was it, you know, why it failed. And I say, so we had a shopping list of all these things that weren't vetted, weren't re-screened. And there was a debate on it, and then it just failed to pass. So it was just a, that's the starting point from my perspective. If you define those, then you can have an honest conversation.
Yeah, no, that's an excellent point. And, you know, I've been on, you know, on the staff side of the table, on your side of the table. Or, you know, we've had a transportation master plan, you know, it was meant to be a twenty-year master plan that was completely unaffordable. So it's like, we, you know, this is a sixty-year plan on a twenty-year plan. And, you know, that's where you have to kind of make sure that your master plans truly reflect what's needed based on the projected growth. And there's a lot of issues if you overshoot growth. Like if you say they're gonna grow, you know, by two thousand units and you only grow by five hundred units. There's issues with that, right? Because it it just, it's not a realistic program. So that's why your your comprehensive review is so important. And you need to be looking at the DCCs that you're collecting and bringing in every year. And this is, and I always say to my clients, like, DCCs is a team sport. You know, development services, engineering, finance, they all need to be talking. You know, every year, we should, you should be looking at what's happening with growth. Is it meeting the expectations? And if it's not, like, adjust your program. Or if you have a particular development, they were based on, you know, you were anticipating a thousand units and they build two hundred. You know, you have a DCC program problem, so you're gonna have to adjust growth. So it's just really important that, you know, the entire organization really understands the importance of the program and reviewing it from setting it and also maintaining it.
And could I add? I I think with the total cost, and then if that was the, you know, i- if growth proceeds on the projection. But then a developer comes in and says, I'm gonna put in my own infrastructure. The DCCs that were, you're doubling, you're doubling, you're you're adding it twice. And it's just be, again, that was part of the confusion, like, a big developer puts his own infrastructure in. But your total cost cost projection was to build this as part of the the overall starting point. And I say, you've done it, but the guy, you're double charging.
Just just a moment. Yeah, I got that. Again, and you can't confuse, let's talk about greenfield developers. You can't confuse the onsite sewer system, water system, all that. That's up to the developer. What we're talking here is, if in a greenfield area of three developers, but you have to have a certain-sized road to get there. Traditionally, if you didn't have DCCs, the first developer would be front-ending that road, and in my experience, will bankrupt. It would really the next developer who might be able to develop it. So what DCCs do is say, here's the road. And every unit that benefits pays a portion of that road, which is actually the development community links. Because in fact, it reduces their risk. In our case, I'll give you an example in Colona, the south end of Colona was developed nineteen ninety-two is when they did the plan. You'll see the highest DCCs maybe in the province, but the development community agreed to it because it was still cheaper to spread that across. And and but we spent seven months in breakfast meetings with a team of engineers from the development community. Amel Anderson, the roadway guys that they're best engineers in. And and I'm a planner, so they were boring reunions, arguing over whether or not the second lift of asphalt was one and a half or two inches. Because that lift over an arterial road across the south end of the city was huge money. And they argued, one and a half versus two. They argued the width of pipes. And they argued, but the beauty is, they argued, and they hammered it out, industry and staff, engineers, both sides. And they came up with a number. And then at least that number was a number everybody agreed to. So they never complained about DCCs. So again, it wasn't the number, so you look at it, it's a high number. But if you went to the development industry, they they agreed to that. And part of that discussion was, how much of that use of maybe that park, or how much use of that arterial would be general use? And we haggled over, well, you know, people are still gonna use that because they're gonna go up into the south slopes, whatever. So in the end, it was like, the city will pay fifteen percent of that room. Because that fifteen percent will account for not the residents, but for general city use. And so, you know, I think Nancy's point here, and having lived through those, is it's really above bringing the industry in. And and really, and to your point as well, making sure those costs are real costs. You don't wanna go and just take a number of the air and say, now we're gonna try to use this.
Well, I caution, in Revelstoke, we pay the same DCCs, whether you're, like, everybody pays the same. And I say, wait a second, this is a broad stroke here for.
And like, like Penticton, Colona has multiple sectors. So, so it can be customized to exactly your situation and council's desire for a common subsidization. Good, thank you. Hopefully that helped, Nancy, as opposed to.
Yeah, no, thanks, Ron. That's a great example. And, you know, I think the other thing is there's a rule. I mean, you can't double charge. So, and we, if we went back to the good DCC project slide. You know, the project, like, the city's planned, the development's planned. So, I mean, that that servicing requirement should be in your program already. If you guys have it on year ten and the developer wants to go ahead in year one and doesn't wanna wait. Then there's tools for that. Like, you could use a front-end agreement so that they're essentially paying the costs. And then over time, when the city's collecting fees, they would repay them. Larger cities use it, places like Surrey use it a lot. Penticton's got one front-end agreement. You know, there's, they're administratively a bit of a burden, but there's tools to deal with those situations. And, you know, one thing is, you can't double charge, and it's good when you're planned. So, I mean, you're you're getting to the point where you're gonna have a whole bunch of master plans. And you sound like you have very limited growth opportunities and you know exactly where it's gonna go. Okay. So I think we covered that one. So this whole, like, benefit allocations and assist factors. So benefit allocations are technical numbers for sharing the costs. You know, they're developed by professional engineers. And they're looking at, okay, if you're gonna put in this pipe, who's benefiting from it? If some of that's the existing development, then those are gonna be shifted. Those costs will be borne by the taxpayer and the portion that benefits new development is borne by the developer through the DCC. And definitely had, you know, through this transparent process, I should take the quotes weight, through this transparent process. You know, these are the type of things, like, we open the books, we're talking around the table with UDI and Canadian Home Builders Association. And they're, we're going through them line by line. And quite often, it's gonna be like, we don't agree with your benefit factor or your benefit allocation, and we'll look at that. And I mean, I have seen a few change as you're going through the engagement, going, okay, well, I never thought of it that way. And that's part of the technical review. But these, you know, should be defensible. You know, these are the types of things that the inspected municipalities and and ministry staff are looking at during a comprehensive review. Then there's the assist factor, and that's council's decision. And that's where, you know, you come in and you could provide an assist to new development. The costs are the costs. They're technical. They're based on best engineering practices. But council always has a sixth factor if you think they're too high. And then, but you gotta remember, when you use the assist factor, the taxpayer does have to fund that, and it does have to be accounted for annually. It's also possible, when you're using assist factors, to phase them in, and and we, I may be able to talk about this now. But so some communities, they haven't done a DCC review in a long time. And then and the costs jump a lot. Like, right now, costs are going up significantly across DC municipalities. And maybe in some cases, there may be a hundred percent increase. So to ease that shock to the development community, some municipalities will go, you know what, we're gonna phase this in. We're gonna do a fifty percent assist factor in one, in year one, a twenty-five in year two, a ten in year three. And we're gonna go back down to one in year four. But then, you know, you do have to make those financial adjustments coming out of general revenues. But that is another option that that councils do have. So the calculation process, just kind of looking at it systematically, is like you're estimating growth. You know, how much are you gonna grow? Are you looking backwards? Are you looking forwards when you develop, you know, these estimates? You determine the capital costs that are needed to, to basically service the growth that you're expecting to see. You know, if you're not expecting to see it till year twenty-five, well, then you don't put those capital programs in the in the program. You determine the benefit factors, what's fixing existing deficiencies, what's needed for growth. Then, you know, you look at, you know, what what's the municipal assist factor? I mean, all, many municipalities just use the one percent. But some feel that they wanna reduce the costs to encourage development, and then from there you calculate the rates. So, this is where, you know, I've kind of alluded, the DCCs are a technical exercise, the cost of the cost. But it's viewed through a political lens. I haven't worked with the council yet that says, I don't wanna know what my neighbors are charging. It doesn't matter. Councils typically wanna know, you know, what their neighbors are are charging around them. I mean, Revelstoke, maybe Revelstoke's a little bit different because you are a really unique community. But certainly in the Okanagan, if you look at the Colona context, you know, there's Colona, there's West Colona, there's Peachland, there's Lake Country. And most visitors wouldn't necessarily even be able to distinguish the difference. So municipalities or the councils are always kind of going, well, we don't, we don't wanna discourage development, or we don't want it to go across the bridge. I I'm sure Ron's had that conversation when he was in Colona, and we certainly had it when we were in West Colona. So that's. So, I mean, that's reality. So, but that's where the assist factor really comes in. You know, what's happening with DCCs right now? And I mean, we're we're doing DCC reviews in a number of central Okanagan and South Okanagan municipalities. And I mean, I can say quite comfortably, they're going up. So, you know, this little comparison that I've just shown here is is changing as we speak. There's some, you know, some significant increases. For example, Lake Country is proposing to increase their park's DCC that was just over two thousand a lot, up to twelve thousand. You know, so like massive increases, especially around parks, as I say, across the board. Penticton just did a sort of inflationary adjustment of twenty-five percent. Which got through the ministry because it already hired us to do a comprehensive review. So they wanted to sort of ease in knowing that their rates are going up. So, I mean, that's a definite trend, is upward DCC rates. So exemptions. So, the the Local Government Act identifies specific uses where DCCs are exempt from payment. So places of worship are set out, you cannot charge DCCs. Development that does not impose a new capital cost burden. So if it's not placing a new burden or you have an existing development that's being torn down. You know, you'd basically only charge DCCs on on the new burden. You know, you you don't just start fresh over. Or if you've already basically been paid, paid that DCC, you can't pay it again. Even if DCC rates go way up, you know, that was their benefit for paying when they did. Now, there are some exemptions that are subject to DCC bylaw or or provincial legislation. So right now, as in, as sort of an affordable housing initiative by the province. They exa, they basically exempted micro suites under twenty-nine square meters, so pretty small units. You can increase that number from twenty-nine square meters to something higher. So this could be a tool that the city of Revelstoke could use potentially to exempt workforce housing. You would just set, maybe if twenty-nine, you think is too small, you could set it, for example, at thirty-five or forty. Building permits under fifty thousand in value is in the legislation. But you have the ability to increase that by bylaw, which Revelstoke did do, and there's a hundred thousand dollar exemption. And also, you, less than four self-contained dwelling units, which would be charged at building permit time. Revelstoke did an amendment in two thousand and eight to charge DCCs for less than four units. So you're duplex, for example. So what would be, if you had a zone that allowed both single-family and duplex. Quite often, at subdivision, you would collect for the single-family. They come in for duplex. If they do, then you would collect another DCC. And it's really important when you're doing your your DCC bylaw that you're really considering, you know, this. And if you wanna encourage affordable housing, there's all sorts of tools that you can use just in how you set up your bylaw. And I'll talk about that in in a second.
Before we carry on, Nancy, I'm just gonna leave your room for a moment. So, Council Palmer, if you're sitting in the chair, just you can do it from my place if you want to.
Okay, Nancy, can I ask a question?
You bet.
You said less than four units, you could have an exemption for DCC?
Yeah, the legislation requires municipalities in their bylaws, if they wanna charge for less than four units. Then they put that provision in the DCC bylaw. And the city of Revelstoke did an amendment in two thousand and eight to do that. Most municipalities now, because especially when you look at infill housing. And there generally are infrastructure burdens associated with increasing, say, from one to four units. They do collect DCCs on multifamily projects with less than four units.
So, so what am I saying? You're saying Revelstoke opted to charge for a single unit, for every unit that's built?
Well, Revelstoke in two thousand and eight did an amendment that allowed Revelstoke to charge for fewer than, multifamilies with fewer than four units. So you can charge, but you've got some, you've got some definitions in your DCC that makes it a bit complicated. But that's something like, in a review, you'd probably wanna look closely at how you define units and and density gradients and so on.
So, so the premise of the DCCs originally was to make the new developers pay for new greenfield development. Is that, is that right? So, at an infield, like, a single home, you weren't charging DCCs. That was the, that was the original goal.
If you had a home and you knocked it down and rego, new one.
No, DCC. And it was less than four units, you would be, you're, according to the bylaw, the DCC standard, you could not charge. It was less than four.
Yeah, the, Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong, because I know they changed in the interim. But before, there there there, I don't think there was the less than four provision. I think it was put in, I think it was liberal government put it in, in an attempt. Municipalities were not happy because they said, the province is giving away our money. Like, it's it's community money, and if you, if you put in exemptions, the province acts exemptions. And all you're doing is passing the cost on the other developers. Because you have the infrastructure, you know what it costs, and now you have less people paying for it, you may be increasing the cost. That may be why now you have the option to somewhat opt out. Because it was sort of unilaterally put in, and I think they made that adjustment. I could be wrong, Nancy, but if I had, you can say it, we're still friends.
No, I think you hit it head-on, Ron. I mean, I think that exactly that is that the municipalities, you know, felt that they were leaving money on the table by not charging, and because those types of developments were creating burden. So, so most municipalities do charge DCCs for duplex, triplex and fourplex. And, sorry?
And single homes?
Yeah, so single homes are charged at time of subdivision. So it's, it was sort of an interesting move that it was like, oh, you can charge. Uh, so it's, it was sort of an interesting move that it was like, oh, you can charge D C Cs on single families. And then multi-family developments with greater than four units. And then that changed by having this provision that you could charge for duplex, triplex and fourplex.
So we could, we currently charge D C Cs on us. If you have an empty lot in in the town. We build a single home on it or charge D C C?
If D C Cs haven't been previously paid for. Uh, but generally, D C Cs on single family lots are collected at time of subdivision.
So so an empty lot in our town, Gary, you've got a lot next door, right? Or an empty lot that's not built upon, we charge D C D C Cs on.
If it's an older lot or D C Cs have never been paid.
So if it's not, okay, so so prior to two thousand and eight, no one paid D C Cs. Right? So they've never been paid on any lot in town.
Yeah, the first bylaw is put in in two thousand and five, so it's probably like maybe prior to two thousand and five, you didn't have D C Cs. But if you would basically have to look at it like it's never been paid. And quite often, uh, it's also good to have really accompanying like D C C policy. Uh, and one thing we're starting to do with our clients is actually establish manuals, like procedure manuals on how to deal. All these situations and scenarios just to make decisions, um, you know, to frontline staff easier. Because it can be quite complex. Alright, so D C C waivers and reductions, like there are permissive waivers and reductions. It's important to note, though, that when you have reductions, it is the taxpayer that has to subsidize those. But it does allow council to waive or reduce D C Cs on a number of specific types of eligible development. So Revelstoke's already done this uh, for not-for-profit affordable housing. Um, you could waive on for-profit rental housing as well. Most municipalities would want to secure. Uh, a housing agreement, um, you know, in terms of like the definitions of what's affordable. It would be very prudent for the municipality to be very clear on what would um, qualify for this type of reduction. As well, like housing designed uh, for reduced environmental impact and greenhouse gases. And I have utilized a D C C reduction bylaw for infill development in an existing town center. Uh, based on this environmental impact provision. Um, so that's another thing that you could look at. Uh, but when you do choose to waive, the rest of the community does fund that reduced amount and you do have to account for that annually. And that they would be waivers and reductions would be established through a separate bylaw. And that bylaw does not require inspector approval. Uh, so you can, um, you could also, like, we did a bylaw when I was in West Kelowna that had a sunset clause. So it was like a three-year kind of spark plug idea to get development uh, happening uh, in a certain area, which. Arguably, did it, was it the result that this area is starting to take off? Or was it the market as maybe a little bit up for debate? But we did see, I definitely know of one developer that was certainly attracted to purchase a property based on the reduction. And then from there, uh, a number of developments occurred, which is very successful. And council actually didn't renew the reduction, so most of those developments uh, did pay the full D C C. Um, which was great because we ended up with a lot of affordable housing uh, getting built. Um. So the intent of the legislation is that in cases where D C Cs is waived or reduced. Amount waived is, as I've noted, just entirely supported uh, by the community, by the taxpayer.
Just go ahead, yeah, council.
Um, so a question on the uh, reduction for environmental impact. So hypothetically, if you had an exemption for um. Um, multi-family units that integrated uh, a Quok type car, that's an electric vehicle that was part of that. Could could you be that specific to reduce have a equivalent? So the the philosophy of I'm thinking is that, okay, you have less wear and tear on major arterial roads. Because now you have a shared car kind of situation or encouragement of vice products. Can you get that, can you get that specific for environmental impacts? And then the second one would be on uh, uh, on energy efficiency. So whether if there's alternate energy sources for, uh, again, I'm thinking multi-family, but it could be other kind of units as well. Could there be a way reduction? Uh, I don't think it'd be a waiver, but it'd be a reduction of D C Cs in those cases?
I think you'd have to, one, I'd want to really review the legislation closely. Uh, you know, when we did it and, you know, we did have it reviewed by a lawyer and probably arguably were. Um, you know, some of that is is not clearly defined in the legislation. But in our case, you know, it was more of an area that was close to transit. Um, you know, we did have uh, reduced parking uh, and also density. Uh, so you know, there was arguably less burden on the infrastructure. But I think it's really how you define it. And I think what you really want to do is make sure that the area you are reducing D C Cs for. Actually has less of a burden on on the overall infra- infrastructure. Because it is paid for um, by the community as well, like any of that reduction. But it's certainly something you can use to encourage a development that council wants to see. Um, and I'm happy, like, maybe the next time uh, coming back for part two. Uh, to even focus a little bit more on reductions and exactly the parameters, if you like. They could kind of look to see where other communities are using and how they're using it.
This week, you had your hand up a while ago. Do you have something you want to ask or or comment on?
To your worship, it was just in the previous conversation, I just wanted to explain that in many instances here. The at subdivision, D C Cs were not taken and they were passed along to the building permit. So we do have many situations where at building permit, we are um, getting D C Cs. And also that in regards to how we calculate density within our D C C bylaw. The ability in some cases to actually charge D C Cs for units less than four is hindered. Which is what uh, Ms. Henderson was talking about in regards to our definitions, which is something we need to look at. When we talk about implementation. That was it. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Right, Mr. Senator, turn around. Thank you.
The D C Cs and housing costs, it's often a hot topic, you know, wow, your D C Cs are going up, that's going to increase the price of housing. Uh, there's been some research associated with this. Um, and some of that initial research found that the financial impact of increasing D C Cs is multifaceted. So if D C Cs are going up, you know, by ten thousand dollars, you don't often see that ten thousand dollars tacked on to housing prices in a community. Uh, because, you know, it's really supply and demand that sets the housing prices. And there you're also new developments also competing against existing housing stock. Which either didn't pay or or paid their D C Cs long ago. Um, I think it's fair to say that if you're increasing D C Cs, does it impact the developers pro forma? Absolutely. Uh, could it impact their profit margin? Absolutely. Um, but it it's not just so clear that the price of housing goes up ten thousand. It's a little bit. The the pie is in multiple categories of where those uh, where those costs are impacted. And, you know, from profit to housing prices um, and so on. So, um, you know, developers definitely don't sell under market value and the market's the market. Uh, quite often, the fees are paid. If you look at the last year, you know, the fees are paid a year ago. And by the time that house is ready to get sold, you know, the landscapes change considerably. Uh, so it's quite complex. Um, so some charges in terms of like secondary suite, which is something that came up in your conversation. Uh, many municipalities don't charge D C Cs for suites and they justify that going, okay, that's in a single family house. That could be occupied by the family, things change, kids grow up, they convert the basement to a suite. You know, really, what's the difference in burden? Uh, so some people, some municipalities waive that or have a nominal fee. Uh, sometimes they make up for that potential burden by having uh, specific user fees associated with secondary suites. You know, quite often, maybe at forty percent of a single family user fee would be tacked on based on suite registration. Uh, in terms of um. Carriage houses, garden suites, accessory dwelling units, whatever we want to call them. Uh, they often have separate D C C charges because it is a separate building. It's often a renovation later uh, down the road. Uh, arguably, they do have uh, some burden. Uh, but because they're small, tight units, it's often uh, at a lesser charge. And, you know, maybe one of those that's kind of justified where you're trying to get more housing mix in your community. Um, they sort of tend to be at a lesser rate. Um, it's important that when you're looking at housing costs, it's recommended that you consider apartment D C Cs based on unit floor area. Instead of per-unit charges, so that more affordable units have less of a a D C C. It's also arguable that smaller units have less burden, less people, less um, bathrooms, for example. Um, and then in in Revelstoke already has this for your small lot residential. But, you know, the as small lots pay less D C Cs than large lots. Um, and it's also important to look at the toolkit uh, that you have to incent affordable housing uh, in general. You know, beyond development finance tools such as parking reductions, process streamlining, tax exemptions and density bonusing. When you're, you know, trying to incent affordable housing. And I know you have a uh, uh, housing uh, action plan underway and and those types of recommendations will likely come out of that as well.
So uh, just a comment on the uh, secondary suites. So right now, we charge uh, D C Cs on secondary suites. In, in my opinion, that uh, is a a problem for the. Things that you had discussed, but also it discourages the development of legal suites. So we have many, many illegal suites that could be legitimized if we didn't have D C Cs. But I see that as a major disincentive for people to legitimize suites. And as a result, we lose revenue, water and sewer revenue. And and arguably taxation, because those houses become more valuable, incrementally more valuable, so there's a taxation. So I that's one area that I think for secondary suites. That there should be serious consideration of eliminating D C Cs in that situation. Um, and then there's a secondary aspect to that on the affordable housings. We're using D C Cs for affordable housing stuff, but the uh, discouraging secondary suites is is a market-driven. Uh, affordable housing that isn't going on the burden of tax taxes, whether that's. A local, provincial or federal. So that's just a comment on that. And then also on the carriage suites, uh, carriage houses. Um, I I don't think it's in the same realm as uh, secondary suites. But having that infill, encouraging the infill, and that's sort of further to my comments, certainly you're on. Where saying that's where I think D C C should be reduced to encourage infill.
Counselor Ryan and Counselor Elliot, Mr. Matus.
Yeah, I think there's other costs associated with bringing a suite up to code, right? Like in terms of it becoming legal, so D C Cs is just one component.
Counselor, wait.
Couple things, uh, yeah, houses will sell at the market rate, I agree with that, but uh. D C Cs, if you escalate them, they're going to increase the cost of owning a home, so period. So let's not not fool ourselves. So it does have a direct impact on the price of homes. So and I am, they're not going to, their margins are. Sort of multiply by that. If you pull up ten thousand, it's going to go fifteen by the by the guess the the buyer. So that's that's reality. And then the other thing is that. One thing that's not being considered, a- and maybe this relates to the municipal assist. Uh, everybody in our home who does do a secondary suite or fills it with tenants. Uh, their their older home. Where our our total cost to cover is formulated based on a population size. Ten thousand people, twenty thousand, we're going to be in like ten years. So twenty thousand people, so the D C Cs are to cover a water plant that will support ten thousand people. But the residents that are currently stuffing people into their homes or in the secondary suites or the legal suites, don't don't contribute. No D C C use at all, no, no fees, no money's put into the system based on 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 an overstuffed house of residents. But the new guy coming to town, he's laid to the table, he's got to pay for the whole show. So I I I find that something that we should be considering if we're looking at a municipal assist factor, that plays into the conversation.
Mr. Matus. Actually, I have those two points, I think back to Counselor Palmer's point. And I think one of the things that is considered when you're looking at D C Cs on suites. That one could look at, you know, when the house was built in nineteen fifty, you know, they might have had, you know, three point five persons per house. And now, you know, they might have one. Yeah, because over time, those houses might have a family, four, with a cat and a dog. And now there's one person living upstairs and two people living in the basement. And so there's really, and if you if it goes back to Nancy's point, this is really about the burden on the community. I think you could justify not necessarily having secondary suites based on the fact that what is the real burden? Because the house was built in the fifties, it's not really adding a burden to the infrastructure. Uh, and then to Counselor Elliot's point, I. Yes, the D C Cs add costs, but let's not forget the costs are there and it's really about who's paying. Because to build that house, somebody's going to build that road. And it's either front-ended by the developer, maybe at a higher level. Or front-ended by the general taxpayer, maybe that little old lady in that nineteen fifties house may not like the taxes good enough. So somebody's going to pay for that road. And and so, yeah, I just want to make that point, that if it's not like the D C Cs, it's an additional cost. It's really a redistribution of costs. Thank you for that. Back to Nancy.
Thank you. Yeah, excellent point, Ron. And I think the other thing with secondary suites is there's a lot of workarounds that you can do to avoid the D C C. Um, and sometimes even just your your trigger for D C Cs at a hundred thousand dollars, it might cost less than that uh, to create the suite. Uh, but I think what's really important is that you're getting suites in your community that are also built to code. Uh, so trying to, if you want to bring them on, get them registered. Um, you know, that's, I think, a good point to consider not charging D C Cs or charging really reasonable D C Cs. Uh, the other thing too is, you know, the the cases uh, where you've got a ton of people in the house. Uh, you know, which is probably, I mean, I I know in resort communities that happens quite a bit, but on average, it's probably. Fairly rare on all of the housing stock, but I mean, you you look at your user fees. You know, if they're using a ton of water, you know, make sure your user fee is capturing that. Um, so I mean, there's some other tools you can use to 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 capture that amount.
Yeah, the problem we have, Nancy, is we don't have water.
Sorry, you don't know?
We don't have water meters, so if you're using a ton of water, then uh, we're not capturing them.
Okay, maybe something for the future to.
Thank you.
Alright.
Could D C Cs pay for water meters?
Okay, well, here we're going to actually hit on that in a second, because that's one of the things that is being considered. Um, it's actually the second point on our sort of B C, D C C happenings of late. Is capacity-related projects are under review by the Ministry for D C C eligibility. So that would be, you know, your water meters, your storm sewer separation projects and so on. So there's a hope. Um, Mr. Matusi and I have had this conversation sometimes when, you know, U B C M is tabling, as you all know. Uh, resolutions is sometimes it takes a while uh, for for legislation to change to reflect those wishes. But we're all waiting and holding our breath, but there'll be some some movement there. Um, you know, the other thing I've seen uh, in some of our Metro Vancouver clients is it's gotten very sticky. The ministry is rejecting programs that have infrastructure that's not owned by the municipality. So, you know, if you think of, you know, Trans-Canada Highway, if you wanted to have an overpass to connect your community. That's really just an arterial road, that's not a, it's not a interchange, it's just an overpass. Uh, heading over the highway, uh, the ministry will not allow you to fund that project currently by D C Cs. Uh, because the lands of that overpass are not owned by the municipality and that's certainly creating um, some concern in Metro Vancouver. So something to think about when you're looking at at, you know, anything that's not owned by yourself that is an infrastructure need. Um, and regular reviews are preferred over substantial one-time increases. And, you know, one thing that's been happening and Urban Systems was was asked to provide an update a couple of years ago. At the um, G F O A B C where your CFOs go to their conference. Uh, to talk about D C Cs. And since that time, it's amazing how many calls we're getting from, you know, the finance department. Instead of, you know, Public Works or Development Services about D C C updates. Because it's a real opportunity to increase municipal revenues. Um, and so I think the other thing is the shock of of long delays and huge increases is really hard on the development community. And they would way rather see sort of constant increases, you know, develop your program. And they would way rather see sort of constant increases, you know, develop your program. Utilize the tools you have to increase inflationary costs annually, you know, and keep it, keep it going up slowly. You know, kind of live and breathe by your program versus, you know, huge increases are really hard. Especially can you imagine if you're midstream in a project? There are some opportunities when you're implementing, you know, to give grace periods and and permits that are currently in stream and things like that. But it is something to think about.
Counselor Ryan has a question.
Yeah, in your overpass example, who's been paying that if it's not, if you can't pay for it through DCCs? Like, would it have to be the developer or?
Well, in it would be, it depends on, I mean, who needs it. So I mean, sometimes is it municipally driven, then it could be a capital project. If it's in this case, or, you know, shared by the developer and the city depending on who's benefiting. But yeah, like the developer, if that's a requirement, if their development, then yeah, they could be saddled with that cost. And then you can imagine if their development is triggering that, but others benefit. Then, you know, like one of the tools would be the latecomer agreement, which have a 15 year lifespan typically. And they're taking all this upfront costs. So they would, you know, this is where DCC comes in, because I mean, as you imagine and you know, being a highway community is like. Those overpasses are extremely expensive. And we're dealing with one and with one of our other clients where the developers required to do an interchange. And I mean, nothing is happening with the development because it just takes so much capital to make it happen. So that's where it's kind of, if there's a lot of benefiting parties, it's nice if you could spread it out over multiple people. But yeah, so ownership is is a key when it comes to DCC program infrastructure.
Counselor Elliott.
Nancy, you mentioned the the possibility of annual inflationary increases. That's, is that a new luxury? I mean, I I think when we initially faced it, it was proposed upfront, why don't we just? Give inflation adjusted, we're 10 years old, why couldn't we just, you know, add it to the 10 year inflationary? We were sort of, when it first came up, it was denied, but I think that's the route we're now gone, we've now gone. But when it was first proposed three, four years ago, it was defeated. I'm just curious, is that, is it new or is it just a, what what's going on there?
I think a couple of things. I mean, I think there is a new provision in legislation, but it's also just kind of what are those things? I think kind of even reflecting, you know, more people in the or in community and like the CFOs especially. Understanding how costs are changing and wanting to keep up to those costs. And it's a tool that's available for municipalities. And and I think it's just one of those tools that's starting to become more well known. And maybe a lot of municipalities can keep up with all this legislation. So now many municipalities are starting to implement inflationary, annual inflationary cost adjustments. And it's relatively easy to do, but you have to do it annually and you, you know, you can only do it one year at a time. And, you know, the way that inflation's looking for 2021, you know, it's it's fairly significant. You know, and I mean, arguably too, I mean, not that this really seems to happen much and it didn't even happen during COVID. But in if costs went down, you could also adjust downwards as well.
So we we didn't increase the DCCs for 10 years longer, is that right? So we couldn't catch up by an annual inflation, like a cumulative inflation?
No, you you can't. You have to do one year at a time. And if you wanted to go and do like a 10 year cumulative, kind of like Antiquin did. Then what you're doing is a minor DCC amendment, which requires ministry approval, inspector of municipalities approval. And they would be very leery to do a 25% adjustment or a significant adjustment, 10 year adjustment. For a municipality on a 15 year old program. Penticton spent a lot of time. Advocating for their increase. And as I noted previously, like the only reason that they got support from the Inspector of Municipalities is because they had already retained us. To do a comprehensive DCC review and that it would be sort of completed in a 12 month period.
Thank you. Fair enough.
Okay, so just in terms of other things to consider, you know, as you know, the cost of land is going up. It's increasing significantly. So it's driving, you know, parks DCC rates up considerably. And and if you need any acquisitions for, you know, your other, your servicing infrastructure as well. Land prices do impact DCC rates. So we're really seeing that with a significant increases in parks DCCs. Across the province. UBCM is also reviewing, like that artificial turf example was a. Was a UBCM resolution that was passed. It must be about five years ago. It was actually, I drafted it on behalf of the city of West Kelowna. But artificial turf is something where, you know, it's really a field. I mean, it's it's expanding the use by the community. But as soon as you use artificial turf, it's now no longer DCC fundable and it's considered a facility. So you just have to be really careful in your parks planning. By attributing an artificial turf field and how you're gonna fund it, because you can't attribute the turf part of it to DCCs. And then I think we are seeing, and I think Revelstoke may have seen this in your 2018 review. But you're starting to see more community interest in financing growth, just in general. I mean, the price of housing is going up, affordability is a major issue. You've got a lot of people on fixed incomes that don't want to see tax rates go up. And so there's a, there's become a greater interest in terms of engagement on DCCs. I would say it would be safe to say 10 years ago, if anybody showed up at a DCC public engagement open house, maybe more than two people. It was pretty rare. There was not a lot of interest. I know in the 2018 review, you know, Revelstoke had a keen interest in the public consultation. So it's really important, I think, the education that goes into review and the program. And and also making sure that the the engagement and the education is clear. Because it's not, you know, if we're worried about affordable housing, like we have to go in and be really strategic about about how we would address that. And also, if you're, if you're having low DCC rates and you're subsidizing them, you know, the impact on taxpayers. Because there's a, it's a pretty complex. And then the other thing is just, you know, you've got affordable housing in the city of Redo, Revelstoke, but you also have resort community. And, you know, is the community wanting to subsidize secondary homes, for example? There's probably a more interest in subsidizing affordable housing than there would be across the board subsidization. So just kind of having a real clear strategy is really important.
The interest of, and the interest of the 2018 referendum was more precipitated. Presupposed to be done on a 100% increase in the DCC terms. Double or almost triple them. So it was a significant form for any any development, any development period.
So just. So just going back to, you know, taking this home in terms of like Revelstoke DCC considerations. Just to provide a sort of brief overview as to where you're at in your program. Which we've kind of, I think, infiltrated through most of this conversation, but. You know, your program was set in 2005. There was an amendment in 08 where some costs were increased and projects added. The total capital program is just over $57 million. You've got 55.9 of that is DCC recoverable, so a pretty small number was attributed to existing beneficiaries or existing problems. And you've got just over half a million dollars is the municipal contribution, which represents the 1% assist factor. Your DCC reserves in December 2020 were at $1.9 million. 1.3 of that was in the water DCC. It is possible to borrow between reserves, just so you know. So if you could, if you had a road project that was your next priority, you could borrow from water to build that road. But then you'd have to pay water back from the road's DCC. So there are some tools to help fund really important priority projects. And then in.
Still has a, has a question for you before you carry on. I I don't suppose you know how much money has been collected in DCCs, presumably more than 1.9 million? But we've spent some?
Yes, you would have, you would have been spending some completing those projects, you know, since 2005. And that would be something that would be a really important exercise that you would go through through a comprehensive DCC review. Is that we would sit down or whoever was completing the DCC review would sit down with your staff and go through all the projects and go, what's being constructed? What's still needed? And you would just sort of revise your program kind of based on that.
Thank you. Carry on. Oh, Counselor Elliott.
And the 57 million we've got there, that's, that's just best guess of what we need to grow. Is that, is that what I'm saying?
Yes, in 2008, that was what you needed to grow. I mean, just looking at inflationary cost adjustments alone. You know, that's, that number will have gone up like significantly. Not even looking at necessarily industry averages, but you know, like construction cost increases since then is, you know, probably around 40%. Just on its own, not really taking into account local conditions and so on.
If you were trying to look at your DCCs, you would look at that, look, you know, we were evaluating. What the DCCs might be, taking a hard look at that number and say, what's included and and is it accurate or what's been done? Should should that be the first step?
Yes, that is exactly the first step when you do a review, is that you would go through the program and you would start striking off like what would be, what's been done. Sometimes you keep projects on that are done, but you have a loan out on. So you would, if you're still paying for that project, you keep it in your program. That's just sort of a technicality, but and then you need to go, okay, what what does the OCP say? How are we gonna grow? What do the master plans say? And then you would start layering on the new projects based on your projected growth over the next 20 years. And then that's how you would, then you would look at the projects that you need to to foster that growth. Then you would go, okay, so is is growth benefiting 100% or is some of this fixing existing deficiencies? And you would attribute those costs to each project.
And it also says, okay, if you look at that, you can look at your OCP, you could say, well, let's. Let's mesh. Maybe maybe our OCP needs to change, or maybe we need to revise things because it seems impossible to achieve. You you would adjust, you would evaluate both entities at the same time.
And as you're going through your OCP review, you know, if you look at, you know, say, greenfield development versus inner city infill. And you have an idea of sort of the costs associated with servicing that growth. I mean, those are, those are, we should help you make decisions.
Thank you. Let's, let's carry on.
Okay, so yeah, and as I noted, you did make that amendment in 2008. For DCCs to reduce nonprofit rental in support of housing and you did a boundary extension in 2018. So you have touched the bylaw a few times. As well, you're, it kind of hit this, you don't have a parks DCC at all, but you do have the other DCCs. Since 2005, 2008, Revelstoke seen, you know, significant growth, you know, the resort development alone. Cost increases, land is gone up significantly. And then, as we talked about, some projects have been completed and new projects are being identified that should be incorporated into the program on the next review. You've got OCP update underway, infrastructure master plans, the parks and rec master plan. That may identify some need, some needs that you may want to consider a parks DCC the next time around. And you've also got your regional economic development strategy underway, which might identify some economic needs. And, you know, maybe a reason to potentially encourage certain types of development that you'd want to consider as you're developing a program. Or or service, existing industrial areas to be able to facilitate the type of development. That you're looking for in, for example, your industrial park. So we've seen lots of rising costs, as I've mentioned. Just like, as a note, construction costs have increased by 25% just since 20, between 2017 and 2020 alone. Yeah, and I mentioned like inflation from 2005, CPI has gone up 32%. From 2005 to 2021 alone and construction costs are often exceed CPI. So just, yeah, costs have gone up a lot since the last time you did your bylaw. So yeah, that's kind of where you're at as a community in terms of your DCCs. And just based on our conversation that we've had over the last couple of hours. And just wondering, you know, does counsel view any of, anything differently? Based on our initial conversation or anything that you'd like to to add before we just kind of provide a brief overview of what the next steps are from here.
Any comments, questions, counsel? Counselor Elliott.
Okay, so we're talking about the municipal assist factor. We're talking about these various different projects. There's different balances between the existing taxpayers and the future growth. So can that assist factor vary between projects or is it rounded out at the end? How does that get? Divided up?
Yeah, so the assist factor would be by category. So you could say have a 50% assist factor on parks and a 10% assist factor on roads and a 1% assist factor on water. The DCC projects, if it's, if it's impacting, exists, is it an existing deficiency or existing tax curves? Then that's where your benefit allocation would come in.
Just to remind you, you could have different sectors to, in case of Antiquin. You may have two different sectors of the, correct me again, Nancy, with the benefit. The assist could be different for those two sectors because of the nature of the improvements that were put in.
Absolutely. And so, for example, like infill development in the community core, because you really want to see that type of development. You could increase the assist factor there, but leave it on the outside areas at 1%. If you had a few sectors.
Any further comments, counselors? Any thoughts from now from what we did, what we stated when we started?
Just, all growth should pay its own way. Just, I mean, collectively as a community. When we started this town, we didn't charge the new guys coming to town. We pool our resources, that's how we get our infrastructure. That's how we get our roads. We all pitch in. And I say, we all pitch in, it's growth, strength, whatever. It it's all part of our community. And that's the element was oftentimes with new growth, new guy pays, latecomer pays. I find that very somewhat offensive if we're, if we want open for business, willing to draw people into town. You know, certain communities don't have any DCCs. It's just a matter of balancing what what makes sense. And I'm saying, I'm eager for growth and they keep things happening because we all benefit. The whole downtown, they don't pay any DCCs, but they all benefit from growth and having customers. You benefit the customers, you you have customers. And so there's value to having new people in town. So it's a tricky one. All growth maybe should pay to the majority of the other way, but it's still part of the community that they're buying into.
And we definitely have to find find balance with that. Because, you know, as as Mr. Matuzzi said, you've got grandma that's had her house for 50 years. She shouldn't be expected to pay for for the new guy that's just coming to town.
Well, the thing is, our DCCs have granted the other types of housing to be constructed. Because there's nothing besides that single large family home.
Yeah, just to point out part of the problem that's occurred over time is back in the 60s, I said, CMHC financed a lot of municipal growth. And those grants, those war, federal government played a big role in some of that housing you see around in downtown. And that dried up, like over that dried up, the province and feds got out of market housing essentially over time. And so DCCs was the gift given to local government by the provincial government to make up the difference. Because clearly, local governments couldn't fund and front end big, you know, trunk sewers, big water to deal with the growth, so long the growth. And so, you know, the the DCCs was the replacement to the big federal funding that pretty much dried up in the. Tell me, you ever need the 80s, 70s, maybe at the latest?
So we pitched for DCCs in 2008 because we had this perception that the resort was gonna change our our existence here. We put the DCCs in, so the new guys out there pay. And that was fair, fair game. But it's now it's translated to everybody in our town and we're in a housing crunch. And I say, well, what's contributing to the, to the problem? And I say, my, my, there's a whole series of things that involved. I mean, it's not just one DCCs, but it's all part of the discussion. We should be happy. but it's all part of the discussion. We should be having this DCCs process, regulations from the federal, whatever it is that are in the way, we should be putting that on the table, discussing it. But DCCs play a part, that's all I'm saying. And I say, the message, you say, all growth pays, they're shared, pays all their way. It's something that says, we're not a community.
Well, I think we want to go back to actually what Mr. Matusi said at the beginning. Kelowna probably has the highest DCCs, but it's a quickest growing community. So as long as there's that balance and they know what they're paying, they're willing to pay that sort of thing. Is that kind of?
Yeah, I think I think in the end, it's both fairness.
Yes.
And you have the ability to to change your DCCs to reflect the reality of your community and what's important to council. So I think DCCs are relatively neutral. They're a tool, but it's about allocating costs fairly to everybody. So again, I don't see them as a negative thing necessarily. You can do it fairly.
Yeah, I think that's what people need to stand up. It's fair to you, you're growing.
Councilor Shirley?
Just to clarify too, in the way this slide is presented here, those three bullet points, that first square, those are different options of looking at this. It's not suggesting we make all growth pay its own way. That's one of the, that's the far end of the spectrum. The first bullet is open for business, willing to incentivize and subsidize that growth. The middle bullet is that middle ground incentivize certain kinds of growth. So this is this whole discussion is where on that sliding scale are we going? And I don't think anyone at this table wants to go, well, sorry, Councilor Ryan. But that's that discussion that we're having is where do we want to fit on that spectrum, not that we're going to go one way or the other yet.
I think we're more in the middle ground and, you know, maybe you're a little closer to the first one and Jackie's closer to the.
I have to say, it comes across a little.
I think, yeah, we don't get a full picture of what growth does. Like, construction is the number one industry in town. And people don't even realize it.
But there's going to come anyways.
Well, it doesn't matter. It's just you just don't want to send a message out here. It's just a message. It's all.
Just from that that conversation as well, on the open for business, the problem is inhibition because of process stuff. That's, I think that's the real problem for developers. It's not the DC, for big developers anyway, it's not the DCCs. It's how well, how well do we serve those that want to come to our community? And I really think that's how we need to demonstrate. For people that are open for business because because we're going to, we're going to serve those people that are coming and so.
I don't think anybody, any builder, any developer would be, well, not not agree to a fair treatment at a reasonable, reasonable cost contribution. I don't think that's.
That's fair.
Transfair, fully upfront, it's it's a reasonable amount. And I don't think anyone's going to like that.
And and everyone wants good service. So, you know, we just need to excel in all of those things that we discussed today. Good. All right. Thanks so much, Nancy. We'll get you to carry on.
All right, thank you. Yeah, and remember, DCCs are a tool to facilitate development. Because if you can't, if one developer can't afford to put the infrastructure into service development, it's not going to happen. So it's a tool to to actually facilitate development happening. So, you know, just sometimes it's viewed as a charge and a cost, but it's also something that can facilitate development. So in terms of next steps, the ideas will come back to council and do part two and talk a little bit about the other development tools. Probably we won't have to go quite as in depth as we have here, but, you know, happy to just continue the conversation and kind of dive into those. You also have a DCC inflationary adjustment that's coming forward at a future meeting. The next steps would be that council would give three readings to that bylaw and then it would go off to the ministry and the inspector of municipalities for approval. We've done a dry run going, talking to ministry staff who is supportive of the proposed change, so that's good news. And then it would come back to council after being signed off by the inspector for adoption. And then you could potentially do one for next year as well, and inflation looks to be going up quite strongly. And then you've got your OCP and your master plans underway. Once those are done, that's probably a really good time to consider a comprehensive review because you'll have a good idea on the projects needed to facilitate the the growth that you guys plan through your OCP. And I don't know, does council have any other information or next steps? I think that DCC reduction bylaw for environmental was one I made note of. Is there anything else or any additional information that you'd like to receive that we could provide at the next meeting?
Councilor Palmer, you have a grand.
Yeah, so thank you for making the comment regarding the inflationary increase for twenty twenty two. So this four percent, that's reflective of twenty twenty one. Is that correct? Or is that twenty twenty?
Miss Wade?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, this is actually over three years. And so it reflects, if I remember correctly, it won't reflect twenty twenty one, it's reflecting eighteen, nineteen and twenty.
Okay, so so on the part of the next steps for this this council is I I envision that inflationary increase for early on in twenty twenty, like we could start having that dialogue for the next inflationary increase. Now, we might have a difference on what that is. So I don't know that's the, and then the master plan, so there's a lot of work that's being done on all the master plans. I don't see the major review happening with this council. I think we've talked about that before. And I think staff was caution about that, but this is putting all the pieces together for essentially after the elections. This is going to be twenty twenty three when another robust discussion on or we're going with the DCCs, but that's going to be here real soon.
Any other comments or questions?
No, it's great, thanks.
Good. All right, Nancy, we want to thank you for the time you've taken and and for the information you've given us. It really is is good. So I appreciate this.
Thank you very much for having me.
Awesome. Okay, thank you again. We're going to carry on our next problem. We're going to go to unfinished business, farmers market location discussion. So Mr. Nato is here with us. So, Mr. Nato, do you want to start or do you want us to start back into where we had discussion on?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think it would be best if council started the conversation and then I along with Ms. Braun and Ms. Wade are here to answer any questions.
Okay, good. So we want to talk about, so Councilor Palmer, do you want to start with? Because I think you brought the table to the table before about this farmers market.
Yeah, I encouraged the discussion at the committee, the whole was really Councilor Elliott wanted to have that dialogue.
Oh, that's right.
Where we're going with farmers market and the vibrancy of our downtown downtown. Well, yeah, I I think I was, I became impassioned when when it was sort of put off till next year and I said, ah. You know, the the whole idea of the market was to to unify, to drag or bring people into our downtown. And I've been to Canmore, they've closed off the entire street and it's on the weekend, it's pretty happening place. I, Canmore is different here, I'm sure, but it does, they've had a solution there. And they haven't, they they brought their community together rather than divided them. And the current arrangement, I don't think anyone's really happy. I mean, they they work it. And they'll put on a good show, a good face, but I don't think anyone's really ecstatic about the arrangement.
Okay, so we're we're two thirds or three quarters of the way through the farmers markets season. Mr. Nato, I know I had conversations with a couple of people that are instrumental in the farmers market. And my comment was, I was hesitant about bringing them back downtown because I didn't know what was happening as far as construction in in the plaza, but also we don't know where we're at with COVID restrictions as we move forward. And so I'm a little, little concerned about that. But so can you weigh in at all regarding that?
Sure, thank you. So in terms of COVID restrictions, that's not impacting the market's locations at this time. They're considered flow through events, so there's no limitation on capacity. There are probably protocols that the market organizers themselves have to follow, but that shouldn't impede them from relocating downtown. The LFI, so we have two markets. We have the Revelstoke Farm and Craft Market and we have the Local Food Initiative Market, the LFI Market. The two markets do not want to combine. I've had multiple discussions with them. And one of the markets is adamant about not joining the other market. So in terms of bringing them together, that's a little bit out of my control. That's something that they've, you know, they've tried to work it out. One of the markets is resistant. That won't change. The LFI market is currently located in Centennial Park and they are totally content in Centennial Park. They do not want to move to downtown this year. The patios are definitely impacting the market layout. They are losing spots due to the patio, so they are not able to have as many vendors as they would like if they relocated downtown. Being in Centennial Park has actually given them the opportunity to expand the market and to host additional vendors, which they're really thrilled about. So they're happy staying in Centennial Park for the rest of the year. The Revelstoke Farm and Craft Market, which is located just across from the Splash Park in the empty lot there, they most likely would like to move back to the plaza. I haven't had that conversation with them, but prior to this discussion with council, I was getting calls for them saying, you know, what's happening? When can we go back downtown? So I'm pretty confident that if we reached out to them and said, do you want to go back to the plaza, they would want to go back to the plaza. But my comment to that is, in the past, the businesses in the plaza were very vocal in stating that the market actually did not help their business on the Saturdays. It was actually more of a hindrance to them and they felt that they were they were kind of in the market's back alley. The way the market was organized and set up, it was like the boxes, the back of the tents faced the business, so they weren't really part of the market. And that was always a challenge for them. So I think this is a good year, a good opportunity to really see how well the businesses do without the market being in the plaza. And I know that COVID is impacting what's happening in the community, but it seems that we are really busy with tourism in the summer months, so it might be a good opportunity to see how well the businesses do without the market in the plaza this year. And I also feel that if we are going to bring the market back into the plaza this year, that we should have some type of consultation with those businesses in the plaza, giving them the heads up and getting their perspective on how they feel about that, given what they've been through in the last sixteen months with COVID and just loss of business.
Mr. Nato, I did have a conversation two weeks ago with the president or the vice president of that market. The lady had approached me as I was in the market and asked me about what we were doing. And I I stuck my neck out and I said, I would doubt that we would see you back downtown this year. And gave the reason about the construction, what was happening and wasn't too sure what was happening in the downtown core or room and and talking about COVID. They seemed to be content with that after I I gave my explanation. And I think they had reached out to you prior to that. So it it seemed to work out well. My presence there, she was going to send me an email until I showed up at her booth. And she was willing to, you know, to discuss that. And I said, I just, I don't see that happening for this year. And they seem to be content unless they reached up to you in the last week or so. I think they're content where they are. However, when we go into the new year, I think that they would like to be back downtown and I think we would need to engage as to how that would, how that would work. Councilor Palmer?
Mayor Souls, is that the LFI market or the other market?
The other market.
The other market.
The other market, yeah.
So thank you to Mr. Nato for the information there. I'm getting, I've I've had some feedback from the LFI people. And the the sense that I get from them is they're accepting as opposed to content. And that they're they're possibly resigned to the fact that they're going to have to stay where they are for this year. That's that's the sense that I'm getting and that they actually would like to be back in in the in the town core. So and and I, what I'm hearing from the community as a whole is this is an important community thing. And having this in our downtown core is important. And for for the greater, greater good of the whole community. So that includes other areas in the downtown and drawing people. It's an area that's been identified. The the point on the the other market, and this has been going for years, and I don't mind stating this publicly, but the the farmers markets should be drawing and complementary to the businesses.
Right.
And I agree that the businesses have been, they're on their backs. And I think that's something that we need to adjust and say, this is the way it's going to be. You're going to be complementary to businesses. You're not going to be putting them in your backs. So that, so for example, that when somebody's coming in and they're buying their little thing, their little toy truck or whatever from the farmers market, they're seeing Chubby Fosters or whoever there and say, oh, look, isn't this cool? I'm going to go sit there. And that's drawing, drawing people. So I think that's absolutely critical. I I definitely want to see the farmers markets brought brought back in in sort of where we're going in the future. And the, as far as the, you know, visitors, the two markets, I think they need to both be in the same area. I don't think we want this sort of division of different areas. Yes, they can have their philosophical differences and have their whatever in behind the scenes. But as far as the community goes, the tourist count, it's one farmers market. It is one farmers.
The way it was set up before, people didn't know there was a different market.
And and I think that's really important to say, you know, and if they if they've got issues, personality issues or organizational issues between the two of them, let them have that behind. Don't bring that into our community. This is just one. Like, don't put it in our face. So even though I had the idea of having two sides, you know, this this is one farmers market. And I guess the last point is on capacity for expanding on the markets, we we can expand another street. And I I see the farmers market as a really important thing, but it principles are, it should be for our entire community, it should be complementary to the businesses and, you know, ideally enhancing them. So those are my comments. I would like to see them back sooner. And I I don't want to see them coming back though and then putting businesses, Scoop and Mark whoever to their, to the backs of the.
Yeah, I think the conversation would then have to be, there would have to be conversations with those businesses. Maybe we put their tents in the center, down the center line so people are are seeing exactly what's going rather than the reverse. Now you're walking down the sidewalks. Councilor Shirley, you had a business right out of the farmers market, so would you like to?
This is the middle of farmers market. I was involved with the LFI when second market was created, the whole hubbub around that.
Right.
So I do have some background experience with this. I'm curious through the chair to Mr. Nato about what policies do we have in place for the farmers markets being in the downtown core? And the reason why I ask is because I remember asking on behalf of the businesses, what can we do to enforce how the farmers markets operate? And at the time, I was told there was no rule. They did not need to get sign off from the businesses downtown like we do when we close a road. That there was, it was a bit of a gray area. So I'm wondering, is that the case? Is there a policy in place that we can work with or do we need, or could we create one? So that when we do welcome the farmers markets back downtown, it is to a structured, written document and policy.
So Mr. Nato, before you weigh in, I'm just going to ask the staff if they could have the screen stop sharing with the development finance workshop so that we can see, we can see our staff. Yeah, thank you for that. Okay, now, Mr. Nato, if you would, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. There is the special event and licensing policy and procedure that we follow. So anytime a road is closed, and that would include for farmers markets purposes, the event organizer does have to go to each business. the event organizer does have to go to each business and let them know that that's happening. And then the business owner would have to sign off on being given notice of that event happening. So that does not mean that they approve the event happening, but the, just that they've been given notice that the road would be closed for that event during that timeframe. So um in terms of the market layout, in the past, we did have conversations with the Revelstoke Farm and Craft Market about um laying out the market in a manner that would be complementary to the businesses. One of the, or a couple of the business owners, myself and the market executive got together and discussed options, drew out a plan that the businesses were happy with, but the market was not happy with. So in the end, the market had a lot of different reasons on why a different layout would not work for them. Part of the restriction is the curb in the street. There's two different heights in the Plaza. So I think there may be an opportunity when we do the revitalization of the Plaza to take care of that and possibly have a better layout, a better um just improvements to Grizzly Plaza that would be more conducive to a market setting so that we could possibly put the tents in the middle and have the pedestrians walk in between the business and the market vendors, which would probably be more um feasible and more acceptable by the businesses.
And that seemed to be the way that LFI market was set up and it seemed to work well for them. So I, I think that would be good. Obviously, the street was a little wider because they're on the main part of the street and not in the Plaza, so.
And I think we definitely have to have more conversation with both markets about the future of the market and how that's going to work downtown. Because if the trend is more patios popping up in the downtown core, that limits the number of vendors they can have within their market. For example, the modern patio, when that patio um was constructed, the LFI market lost three vendors because of that space being occupied by the patio. So they have raised that concern with me and they do want to be involved in discussions moving forward. And that may be that may be a reason to move into the side streets. It may not necessarily be that Mackenzie Avenue will be the market street. Maybe it's Second Street, maybe it's First Street. I don't know, but that's something that we'll have to have discussions with them about. But definitely the intent would be to keep the two markets on the same street.
Yeah, I'd be great. Counselor Brooks, do you have a question?
Uh, just, just a comment that I, I fully support the idea of expanding the market and because, yeah, as Mr. Nato said, the, the patios are expanding, there's going to be more of them. I don't see that going away. And but already in the summertime, I know it's each market I'm sure could have like five more vendors, I should make it. There's a lot of a lot more people who are uh growing food, who are making crafts in Revelstoke, want that opportunity and it's uh can be really competitive to try to get into the market, so I think so everyone would benefit by expanding it, but whether that's further up Mackenzie or down the side streets, I don't know what the best solution is, but I trust Mr. Nato could come up with something.
Right, Counselor.
So, so the premise of the market, who, who initially led that? Is that the city saying we would like to encourage a farmer's market in our, our downtown?
Mr. Nato, you comment on that?
I, I'm not sure who led it, but I do know that it's really up to each of the markets to determine how big they are. So us saying that we want the farmer's market to expand, well, we don't have the tools to enable them to expand, but we can put it out to them and say that if you want to expand your market, we can support you with more road closures. But as for finding the vendors to expand the market, that's outside the scope of the city. That would be the market's responsibility.
No, I, I'm just trying to understand how it became divided and.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not going to get into that.
Well, I mean, they're now dictating how we run the business, right? I mean, i- is the street we're closing to the market, then there's two different factions involved and they want to run differently. And now there's infighting and, and a whole bunch of stuff.
I can send you a bunch of information.
Okay, uh, it's not, as, as well, but it, but it defeats the whole purpose of it.
It's been really frustrating.
I mean, it was meant to be a cohesive glue to, you know, get people out and then milling above downtown core. And all of a sudden, we've got these personalities or divisions.
Yeah, and so I, I think we'll just leave that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to break it up.
And that, and that's good. So I think at this point, unless there's any further reason for counsel to want to discuss this further, we can leave this with Mr. Nato. She can discuss with these market people as to how we move forward and uh and and work with them for the new year.
I think that's inevitable.
Cohesive and, and, or cohesive in our mind, uh, maybe not theirs. Counselor Charlette?
So as we go through all these different master plans in the OCP, this seems to tie in really well about that conversation. What do we want to see our community look like in the long term? So there's the, the Grizzly Plaza revitalization. And I think after today's conversation, the discussion around the layout of the market makes sense to go, like, one of the possibilities was reducing those curbs and really opening it up for pedestrians. I think that's a great option for that block. Now, when we talk about expanding into other areas of the community and making it known to the markets that we would welcome and support them and taking more street closures, can that conversation, does that conversation fit into our OCP discussions and our master plans? Like, where does that piece fit in our vision for long term? Like, what does our downtown look like in ten, twenty years?
So Ms. Wade has just uh turned her camera on, so uh we'll hit you with that question.
Thank you for hitting me with that.
Where are we going?
Uh, where are we going? Um, so a couple of things. We've got uh the Heritage Management Plan underway that will impact this area as well, and that has commenced and we've started back up our Heritage Advisory Committee. And Counselor Brooks Hill was there at our last meeting and got uh Heritage Planning 101. So we've done, we've commenced on that. Uh, and you're right, as part of the OCP, we're gonna have to look at this area as well uh with land use designation and policies with heritage and downtown, et cetera. So it's going to dovetail into the Heritage Management Plan and also the OCP. And then eventually there will be some impact on the uh zoning bylaw. But those are the two high level pieces that we need to have guiding policy on for this area.
Hey, Counselor Charlette?
Uh, and then also I'm curious, uh, and perhaps Mr. Black can weigh in on this is, was, would the transportation master plan tie in with this as well, especially when we're talking about active transportation? Because one of the challenges that we've talked about a lot is parking. And looking at that LFI market down at the Ball Diamonds and the sea of cars that drive down there. And that impact in the downtown area that we've always struggled with, like, where the heck do you park to get into this market? It is very inaccessible in that sense. So I'd be curious as to how the transportation master plan is going to reflect on people moving in and out of our downtown core.
Is it premature to ask you to answer that question, Mr. Black?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, we will be looking at the overall parking supply um from a community perspective for the downtown area to understand whether or not we are overparked or underparked in accordance with the latest standards. And where, if in fact we do need additional parking downtown, where that could possibly go. We do have an idea currently. Um, I'm not able to speak at this point in time as to what that capacity should be or could be, but it is part of the transportation master plan.
All right, thank you for that. Um, Ms. Braun, do you have anything to weigh in regarding the farmer's market and, and the Plaza?
Through your worship, I think Ms. Donato and Ms. Wade and, and Mr. Black captured most of my comments. I think um what I would emphasize is there does need to be proper consultation with all of the impacted businesses. And it doesn't make sense to do that if we're not talking about the renovations to Grizzly Plaza. I don't want to see have two conversations happening. Uh, you know, with initially about how they feel about the market returning and then how they feel about renovations to Grizzly Plaza. Having had a round of conversations with twenty eight businesses prior to the um councils debating the closure of Mackenzie Avenue, I've already shared those findings with council. There's nothing new on that front to report. Um, I did speak quickly, briefly to the outreach consultant who's working with the Chamber and Community Futures to uh confer with businesses about their economic recovery. She had nothing more to add to what I had provided previously other than to say that they are eagerly awaiting the opportunity to be consulted around Grizzly Plaza renovations. So I think my, my only point would be to emphasize that we do need to do a, a comprehensive engagement with downtown business core. Um, but we need to do it once and we need to, to cover all of our bases when we do it.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Palmer?
Um, just regarding uh, you know, Mackenzie Avenue uh closure for instruction and the uh, these renovations. Uh, there's a lot of questions out there, including with myself. What do these look like? When is this construction schedule happening? And maybe that information's out there, but uh where is that information? Or is this something that maybe we should be having in the community, the whole, like, when is the construction schedule? And what does this look like? So we don't have the surprises like the little kiosk things where everybody got up in arms. So, yeah, is there any kind of comment on what it looks like and timelines?
Ms. Braun?
Through your worship, I would defer to Ms. Wade. I understand that she's leading the Grizzly Plaza renovation project. Uh, there is another pot of funding. As you recall, I brought forward a quest to council to apply for additional funding for enhancing what we want to do in Grizzly Plaza, but this is would be within Ms. Wade's jurisdiction. Again, my role would be more to support the engagement piece, which I understand would happen long before any construction began. So um the construction won't, won't be underway until, until they have a clear idea with feedback from the impacted community and the residents, what they'd like renovations to look like.
Okay, Ms. Wade, any comment?
Yes, thank you, your worship, and thanks, uh, Director Braun. Um, uh, I'm working very closely with the Director Donato, Braun and Black on this. We all worked together in doing the initial CBT grant. We engaged some consultants to give us some preliminary ideas on um streetscapes, um, et cetera. To, uh, because we had to do that in order to um have a supportive case to, for CBT for funding. We have the portion of the bandstand. We have to do a consultation process uh of the funds we've received to date. The, the, the consultation process is not covered under the capital cost of grant that we got from CBT. So I'm working with my fellow directors to bring together the engagement process and um the funding for that, and we will embark on that in September. Um, embarking in that right now over the summer is, is not a wise thing to do. Um, and we are, and just working to uh get a count, a consultant um engaged. And we have another people, a number of people already working on the Heritage Management Plan, the OCP and other projects. And we also have somebody who's helping us locally. So we're trying to sort all that out uh right now. And I can report back to council with a timeline once we get this all sorted out.
Appreciate that. Any further comment, Counselor Palmer?
Yeah, so I, I guess basically the answer is we don't know. That's what I'm, I'm hearing is we just have no construction timelines. Uh, and then my only comment is Wade, you're doing a lot of stuff in September, but uh. Yes, it is.
Yes, we're doing a lot of stuff in this department.
You are.
Counselor Ellie?
Yeah, I, I think that was what, what prompted my real concern is that if the plan is vetted and circulating to all the various departments, it probably won't be for construction until the next summer.
Well, at this point in time, it's.
And that's why knocking this year was just horrific. And the last year was horrific in that Plaza in terms of the market. And then next year is gone as well. Uh, we're infamous anyway. So that was my, my, and I think the whole idea of the market was to bring people together.
Well, it doesn't mean even if there's going to be construction, it doesn't mean that, uh, Mr. Nato and and her group can't have that conversation with the markets and we find an alternative to bring them downtown. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Yeah.
So that's not, it's, it's, say, that's absolutely not going to happen, but there may be a workaround and, and that will have to leave those staff.
Yeah, I mean, add some new streets or extend it down, down to Mackenzie. I'm all for it. But I just think leaving it until, until people get open arms about it is, is, is a path we don't want to go down.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Ms. Wade, you have your hand up. Do you have something further?
Yes, thank you, worship. I just wanted to clarify the terms of the capital grant that we got from CBT is to initiate construction in twenty twenty-two. So unless we got an extension with that grant, we would be looking at uh trying to initiate that next year.
All right, all right. Okay, thank you all for that. Uh, we'll leave that with you and and if there's updates, you can bring them forward. Let's move on to uh Communication Bylaw Compliance Report. Ms. Floyd, is there anything that you want to focus on regarding this?
Um, I don't think so. It's pretty, um, the bylaw enforcer, bylaw compliance officers are busy as usual. They um, their files continue to increase month over month and uh they're doing a great job. I think that um we had them working some off hours, not according to their regular schedule to get watering compliance and to monitor the skate park. I think that was quite successful. The first couple of weeks, they um did a lot of education and now they're finding that they don't need to anymore. So we're going to revert back to their regular schedule and re, re uh look at it every couple of weeks.
Awesome. Appreciate that. Counsel, any comments on the report? Counselor Palmer?
Um, so I note the aggressive dog situation there. And just a comment for the two or three people that might watch this YouTube to that if there's aggressive dogs, report them to the city. It's really important to report them. Don't feel bad about doing that, but if there's aggressive dog situations, because we don't need this. This is a dog community. We need to keep that ambiance. We don't need that kind of conflict. So let's just make sure that that's done.
Yeah, thank you for that. Appreciate that. And, and that could be any size dog from a bigger dog down to those little light white. Any, anything further, Ms. Floyd, on, on that report?
No, nothing. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to uh Chief DeRosi and, and the second quarter fire department report. Uh, do you want to lead that? Uh, lead us through that, chief?
Thank you, your worship. Um, as you can see in the report there, we had seventy-four calls total in the second quarter. Uh, five fires uh and seventeen alarms, which is not unusual, but that's a lot of alarms coming in, which uh ended up not being fires. Otherwise it'd be in the fire section there. So we're looking at um a little bit more enforcement on the bylaw uh for false alarms and frequency and numbers of those. And um the other one was thirteen burning complaints, which was quite a bit more than we're going to be reporting in the third quarter, so. That's, that's good there. So and then at the bottom of the page, you can see your second quarter comparisons from prior years. So there's a little bit of an increase over last year, but hopefully fairly stable. Um, and in our fire prevention and public education and code enforcement, of course, um, hundred and fourteen fire and life safety inspections were done in the second quarter. Uh, right around thirty-eight, thirty-seven per month there is, is an average. Um, I think if we were to look back in our previous year histories, uh, we'll see that the uh follow-up inspections have decreased significantly uh month over month. So that's really good information there. We had twenty-one inspections in April and only eight follow-ups, which is good. It means that the compliance is staying steady and not reverting to um, to, to code failures uh uh over history. So that's good. People are getting uh inspected. The inspections are holding. Their re-inspections uh are not required for the next year. The graph um just shows you how uh things are going for fire and life safety inspections uh year over year uh for the second quarter. And uh it's fairly stable, but uh it's increasing and that's a reflection of the increased inspectable properties in Revelstoke. So the inspectable properties would be commercials, business, public buildings, those sorts of things. Um, including common areas of uh multifamily residential such as apartments and condos. Of the fires that were reported, there's uh roughly a hundred and, sorry, is that, yes, that's a hundred and thirty thousand. There's no, we missed a comma. My apologies. And so a hundred and thirty thousand dollars estimated for the uh this quarter losses. And so $130,000 estimated for the this quarter losses. And next page for training. So training's been busy. We've acquired some new equipment. So the crews have been training on these. The top picture there is a portable quick attack monitor. We put two of them, one on engine one, one on engine two. And those allow us to do, deliver a large amount of water to fire from the outside while crews are preparing for an interior attack. Huge benefit to the crews. We can do, put more water on, buy more time, especially for rescue. So that's important. And a couple more pictures there. We've been working on some strategies, tactics, some fire behavior demonstrations, coordinated fire attacks and vehicle fire. So those are all the the standard, the bread and butter of firefighting and our responses and Rebelstoke. And for community, we had a wonderful donation from the South Side Market. Chris and Michelle donated, I think it was 35 cases of water for the firefighters to help out, keep, make sure we stay hydrated in the heat wave while we're working and serving the community. And May 4th was International Firefighter Day. So I just wanted to say thank you to all the firefighters that have come before or with us and those that will come in the future. We really appreciate all the work and support that they provide to the community. And of course, an ongoing thing is firefighter health and safety. Critical incident stress management is very important. And so there are some tools that are developing and and very, very effective, such as the the firefighters' mental health program for the first responders there. Good reviews coming out of that from members that have, that have used it. Not our own, but they know that it's available to them. So that's just my summary there. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Great. I just, I want to say thank you first of all to that health and safety for our staff. I think in this day and age, it's mandatory to have. And I've been in this game a real long time and seen seen the other side of it. So thank you for that. I also want to say thank you for recently a fire that was out on the highway that involved a transport truck and some and some lumber and whatnot. And your staff was able to go and put that out, which alleviated a forest fire. I just want to say thank you for that because you dealt with that quickly and efficiently. And that made all the difference in the world kind of behind the scenes to what could have been happening now. So I'll go back to counsel and if counsel has any comments or questions and then we'll, Counselor Elliott and then Counselor Sherlett.
EMS conflict is going on with the hours and is that affect you guys or is that under your realm, Stephen?
Through Your Worship, Counselor Elliott, it's not really under, we have no influence, so to speak. The Fire Chiefs Association has lobbied and had some success. And the announcement today, is it today? I think it was today. With the, with the changes in staffing certainly has, is going to have a positive effect for the community. It will not affect us very much here with the first responders. We still get called for assistance because oftentimes the ambulance is not in town. It might be up on the highway or transferring patients to another, another hospital. And so we often are called for assistance on those calls as well as just regular manpower for, for other incidents that require it.
Sorry, was there an announcement? I missed it.
Yeah, so I actually made an announcement earlier. We have full-time, 24/7 Alpha Car in our ambulance station as of Monday. All our staff is able to apply for full-time staffing. They are guaranteed their jobs. We are good to go, as are all of the other communities that are in that situation. So the conversations that we have with Adrianne Dix, Don McCormick of Kimberly, Ronald Zostic Golden, myself, the MLA, along with the union, and then the mayor of Clearwater and whatnot, we've all had conversations. He's heard us. We're good to go. So that definitely is positive news. So yeah.
And then one of
Go ahead, follow up and then I'm going to
This sort of different track there, the training center. It was originally built as a, to draw other communities or other fire services into have you had much success in getting other guys coming in or other departments coming into town?
Through Your Worship, not since I've been here. And I think what we'll find is if we look back through the years, nearly every other fire department is required to have their own training facility in some fashion to meet the requirements of the Office of Fire Commissioners' structural firefighting playbook. And, and so the demand is simply not there for it. The part two is there is a large liability to the city of Rebelstoke if we are operating a training school. And so that's one of the reasons why most fire departments have been able to get their own training facility because as an employer, we're quite capable of training our own employees. But if we're trying to issue certificates of compliance and qualifications to students, then you really need to be a proper college. So there is some liability there that we have avoided simply because the Office of Fire Commissioners playbook requires that we do this training. And the only affordable way to really do that is in-house. So most departments have their own now. So we're not seeing any, any requests for, for that use of that training facility, other than our own, own employees.
At the time the training center was proposed, there was a thought that others could use it and and Micah Creek would be coming and that sort of thing. But now you've just clarified that most need to look after themselves. So, so thank you for that.
They do.
Counselor Sherlett?
Yeah, just a quick thank you for the recent posts on social media. Having that clarity to the general public, I think it's been a long way to raise the awareness of what our fire department does. And as a big budget line item, I think that's super healthy for our community to understand that. And it's been really great to see the amount of support that's out there for you guys. So thank you for taking the time and making the time to make that a reality.
Thank you.
And thank you for, thank you for dealing with the gas leak the other day. It made me think about that, all before you date stuff.
Yes, we did get a mention from VC One Call on that particular event. They did post on their social media as well and gave us a shout out.
Good. Counselor Palmer?
Thank you. If we could go to that gallery view just sort of.
Sure. Can you just stop sharing your screen? Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you. I was going to also mention on the social media, I think that it's been received well in the community. And a comment regarding the emergency services, I think what we mitigated with having them kept here, the ambulance services is avoided a whole lack of more calls off hours that we would have been getting if we lost that service. So I think we, I didn't think about that before, but it could have had a huge impact on your department if we had lost those services. Then, and then a question, so I believe, and I've forgotten the right term, but the interface, urban rural interface, there's some provincial grants that were recently announced for doing mitigation work for that. And you don't necessarily have to answer here if you don't know, but I just wondered if we've applied and if not are looking at that. I think it's something that we should be looking at. And this year, of course, is a good reminder of the importance of that work.
Through Your Worship, yes, there's been a number of grants and other funding sources for a variety of different things. One of them is the Community Resiliency Initiative. There's, there's money in that for the wildland interface, urban wildland interface, I think it is, WUI. So it's, it's, again, there's money out there and one of the things that we are challenged with is resources. We do have some funding currently, I believe, from the CBT, which we've applied for extensions on, partly because of COVID and partly because of resourcing. So we're trying to work with that. We have a potential to have a contractor come in and do some fire smart work as well. And again, it's, it's a matter of, yes, there's, there is money out there. We did apply for, I can't remember the exact, the exact one it was, but it was under the CRI. It was denied because our city's budget is, is too large for the fire department. So some of these are meant for smaller communities that have limited funding or access to taxation. And one of those qualifiers is our annual budget. So there's some that we don't apply for. But we look at all of them and we're hoping that there's going to be a renewed interest in fire smart coming fall and spring 2022. And so that's where we're hoping to capitalize on that. We do have some funding already, as I say, from the CBT that we're hoping that we can get, we can actually spend that and use that up this fall and into 2022.
I just can't resist the temptation that we could help out by having too big of a budget, we could reduce that for you to help out for. Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other comments, counsel? Thanks, Chief. I appreciate the report. Awesome.
You're welcome.
And for what you do and for what, for what you guys do for our community and ladies, of course, much appreciated. Thank you. All right. Seeing nothing further, I'm going to ask for termination of the meeting. Counselor Brooks Hill, Counselor Sherlett, all in favor? Motion's carried. This meeting is terminated. Thank you. Want to bring up anything else? So if you can